All right, we'll call to order the committee of the hall meeting for Tuesday, February 15th. First item on tonight's agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Soffa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And vocal singer?
Here.
We have 14 out of 14.
All right, thank you. Up next is a reminder, please speak directly in your microphone for the recording tonight. And if you have something to say, make sure to raise your hand, and then when you're done, clap your hand, and also make sure you stay on mute unless you are talking online. Okay, item number three is approval of the minutes for November 30th, 2021, and December 14th, 2021. Anybody have any corrections, anything on the minutes? If not, can I get a motion on them?
So moved, Uwer?
Second.
Serone. Motion by Uwer, second by Serone. Roll call, please.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
And Malley?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. Items to be removed, editor changed on tonight's agenda, do we have anything? Nothing? All right. Then we'll move on to item five, as matters from the public, for anything not on the agenda. Do we have anybody online? We have everybody here that's on the agenda tonight, in the room.
If anyone online would like to make a comment for items not on the agenda, please raise your hand. No?
Okay, then we'll move right on to item number six, which is a presentation by Batavia Enterprises Incorporated on an update on their Shumway Avenue project. Welcome, Austin.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to spend a few minutes with you tonight. I understand you guys have a busy agenda, so we will be brief, but wanted, before we get going, I wanted to say that I'm joined here by Carl Schertzinger with Rumi, one of our development partners in this project. Carl and I are very excited to just be here for a couple of minutes to provide an update. It's been a bit since we've been in front of you guys. There's this little thing called COVID, and supply chain and labor train shortages that have interfered a little bit with the turn time that we were expecting to have in front of you. But because of that delay, we wanted to take just a few minutes to come in here and just provide a real quick update. So we are very excited to be putting in front of the city staff for their review coming up very soon, and then subsequently your review, our project at 365 Shumway. We have had tremendous amount of progress on this project, and wanted to come in and just give you a quick update. You know, being aware that there has been some history of other development projects in the community that have started and stopped, retraded price, and come to the table with a couple of initiatives that have come and not. We didn't want to be that. I think I made a commitment early on from you guys that we're going to be a different project than maybe some of the other projects that have been presented in the past. So we've been busy at work, working diligently to basically come in with what we're calling an RDA-ready package, and provide to city staff all the documents, all the information that they're looking for. Staff has been working great with us, and we've been working on, I just made a couple of quick notes. Obviously, inflationary pressures are an issue. If you don't hear it on the radio, you'll see it on TV and a news reporter, and you'll definitely hear it here, compliments of your staff giving reports. And so we wanted to be very cognizant of the inflationary pressures. Luckily, we're working with development partners that have certain size, scope, and scale, and are able to hopefully handle that better, but we wanted to come in and make sure that when we presented our information in front of you, it was a project that we were ready to execute on and execute on in a quick timeline. So in addition to repricing the entire project, which, as you can imagine, is not an easy feat, we've also gone forward and completely redid our valuation report. We redid our market study, we're reconfirming our design, our material selections, we have executed contracts with our property tax consultants, and they're providing a revised valuation based on the inflationary cost adjustments. If the price goes up, the rents go up, there's a blend that needs to happen there. And that's obviously going to lead to an adjustment to the TIF ask that we're going to be coming in for. And so we're in the process of honing in all of that, finalizing our concept renderings on something we think is going to be tremendously exciting, and we plan on having that in an RDA-ready package, so a package that we can give to the city staff for their review, and hopefully a full-blown presentation on a less busy agenda sometime in March. And so that is our plan. We are still committed to bringing forward just a top-tier development project for the area, and blending it with a project that's going to be really, we believe, spectacular, and provide a good work-life, work-play balance and option, as we talked about before, for the community. So that's a lot of information. I don't want to take too much time, but I wanted to see if anybody had any questions. Our plan is to formally be in front of you in March with a project and a set of numbers that are clear, that are crisp, that are concise, that are time-sensitive. We have a window that we have to balance with rising interest rates, inflationary pressures, time running out on the TIF clock. All these things come together, and we're trying to basically shoot this narrow window, but we think there's a very good team behind us. We think the city's, you know, the community's ready for a project like this, and so we're going to be back in in March for that full-blown presentation. So anybody got any kind of quick questions? That's a lot, really quick.
I see, Jen, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thanks, Alan. Thanks, Austin, for coming in and providing that update. Kind of piggybacking off of something that George had asked at the last, at the last presentation, something that I'd really be interested in looking in, especially as we talk more and more about it, is really having some green initiatives in this project. I think that's something, as we continue to talk about, that it really needs to incorporate a lot of those items as it moves forward. That's definitely something that I will be looking at, and I know that as this is a long-term project, it's going to be important to have, especially EV hookups for electric
All great points. I know we talked about a solar-ready roof situation as one of the things that we wanted to talk about. I think we're delighted to have those conversations with the city and see what initiatives we can bring forward to have it be a cutting-edge project. That's, those are great points. Thank you.
That was really the only question I had, was about the EV part of it. If your infrastructure in the building was going to be able to handle that, whether or not you had that as the original package, but be able to have it set up so that you can convert spaces over as needed moving into the future, that you'd be able to do that, but plan for that now so you don't have to go back and run conduit or run electrical later on at a higher cost than maybe today is?
Yeah.
Or next month, or the month after that.
Right.
Leah?
If all continues to go smoothly, when do you hope for this project to begin?
We are going to put a plan together and present it to the city staff here in the next coming weeks, and the city staff's going to need some time to review it and have KMA, your TIF consultant, review it as well. We hope to be in front of you guys with an RDA-ready discussion in March, and it is our intention that we would try to move forward swift speed to have a project begin potentially at the end of this year.
I hope all the stars align.
Ah, us too.
Because it's going to take every last one of them, I think, to get that done.
It's been a long time in the making, but I believe the community's ready for it, and I think we're going to be able to deliver on a project that literally every single resident in this town's going to be very happy to see in their downtown.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the update, and we look forward to seeing what you got when you get back here.
We are excited to be back in a month or less, hopefully. Thank you very much.
I know the mask doesn't show up, but I'm excited.
Also smiling underneath.
Yes, very much so. Okay, up next is item seven, which is ordinance 2207, annexing properties on Evergreen Drive, Roberts Lane, and Walnut Street. And this is part of our ongoing work within community development to get all these little donut holes and islands, or whatever we call them, at the shape that they're in, to get them into the city. I am happy to see that these are all voluntary. This should make for an easier discussion tonight. Scott?
Yes, thank you. These are the next round of voluntary annexations. As we indicated, we had solicited for annexation petitions from these property owners. We received five of the petitions for these properties, and so these would be all voluntary. They would be annexed in, under the R0 zoning, and at some point, we would go back and rezon to either the R1L or R1M zoning district at some point in the future. So there are additional properties that were sent, annexation requests, and we did not receive responses from them, or should say, we didn't receive petitions from them, but these are ones we did receive responses from.
Just out of curiosity, are these ones with the new letters, or the new?
No, these actually were under the old letters, actually, but I have spoken to a number of these property owners about it before they submitted their petitions, though.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments? I'm happy when they're voluntary, and so we'll just move these ones forward. All right, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2207, annexing properties on Evergreen Drive, Roberts Lane, and Walnut Street.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer? Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. Okay, up next is item eight, ordinance 2208, extinguishing an access easement on the former First Baptist Church property. And this is one little tiny sliver on that property. Scott?
Yes, so this, we found out kind of late in the process when we were doing the One Washington project, that there was actually an access easement that was on the property. It was picked up on the latest title policy, and so this easement provided access to some adjacent properties. It's basically where the Freidenville Building's driveway is located, or was located, I should say. So we are recommending vacating this easement so that we don't have any impediment to future development on this property when we do have a development proposal come forward. So we own all the property that either granted the easement or benefited from the easement, so there is no purpose for this easement any longer.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this one? Okay, I will make the motion that we recommend to council, 2208, extinguishing an access easement on the former First Baptist Church property. Motion by Wolf, second by Connolly. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. Next is item nine, which is ordinance 2209, authorizing sale of excess land at the southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street by solicitation of bids. Scott?
Yes, this is the piece that we own at the southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and Wilson Street. We had declared this as a remnant parcel that was no longer needed for municipal purposes, so we are looking to sell this. We did have interest from adjacent property owner, and so therefore, we are suggesting that we go out to bid on this property, which would require newspaper notice three times in a 30-day period, and then we would solicit bids, and then we would open those bids at a city council, or I should say, a committee of the hall meeting, and then the city council would, at a subsequent meeting, decide whether or not they want to accept the highest or any of the other bids that might come in. So we are recommending going ahead with it as such, and that we suggest a minimum bid price of $5,000 as our asking price.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on this one? Okay, if not, then I will make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2209, authorizing sale of excess land at the southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and West Wilson Street by solicitation of bids.
Second, Baron?
Motion by Wolf, second by Baron. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
And Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can those all go on the consent agenda, then, those three items?
Yeah, I think that's fine. There are, since it's voluntary, I'm fine with that on the first one, and then the other two are simple.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, then, is item 10, resolution 22-31-R, authorizing execution of addendum number one to task order number 13 with Allen Peppa Architects for additional professional architectural and engineering services related to the Government Center remodeling project in the amount of $9,000. Alderman Rosado?
Yes, this all relates to the remodeling and updating in City Hall. There have been a few items that have come up that can use a little tweaking. One is an additional, in addition to close off second floor, we have an additional design for outside electrical and lighting needs, a design for HVAC building automation system, and a design for new water main and fire services. Gary, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. This is a task order, well, it's actually an addendum to a task order. The amount is $9,000, and this is budgeted work. So if this would have come in as its own separate task order, I could just approve it, but because it was handled as an addendum to a task order that council had approved, we felt it was more appropriate to come back and officially have you approve the addendum. We are, have already authorized the architect to proceed forward with this work, again, given the cost of it, and Alderman Rosado kind of summarized what the work is, but if there's any questions, I can take them.
Okay, any questions, anyway? Are we planning to get to construction this year?
We are, yes.
Okay, to try to get before prices go-
We're hoping construction-
Crazier?
-to be this spring, yeah, yep.
Having gotten into looking at bids and construction costs on my own house, this is getting crazy. Alderman, go ahead.
I know this briefly came up in a previous meeting about what was going to happen out in the parking lot, like out front. I see maybe some of the plans are here, but is there an update with that also?
That'll be a completely separate discussion in a separate meeting, yes. We know that we have to come back to you for that discussion.
Thank you.
Alderman, Uwer, did you have?
Yeah, that was the same question.
Alderman, Beck?
I was looking at page eight, the pictures that you have of the monument sign for out front, which I think will be a fantastic addition. The, looks like there's a sidewalk drawn, but then crossed off, that would attach to the sidewalk out there. I was just curious what that was.
I think the intention is that we really don't feel it's appropriate to connect the main entrance of City Hall over to the Veterans, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, so we'll redirect that sidewalk more towards the parking lot. It's just, it's just a working drawing at this point.
Any other questions? If no further discussion, I'll make a motion to move to city council, resolution 2231-R, authorizing execution of addendum number one to task order number 13 with Allen Peppa Architects for additional professional architectural and engineering services related to the Government Center remodeling project in the amount of $9,000. Motion by Rosado, second by Soffa. Roll call.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
And Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
All right, thank you. Up next is item 11, resolution 22-24-R, abatement of $399,124 from the 2013 9,120,000 refunding general obligation bonds. Alderman, Chantet?
Thank you. Actually, I can take all five of these next ones together, they're all on the same issue. We issued general obligation bonds for a handful of different projects. As you can see in the memo, they were for a variety of things, IPA refunding, electric refunding, drainage, and capital, fire station, and water main replacement back in 2020. But instead of hitting property taxes, we pledged different sources of revenue, water sewer revenue, electric revenue, paying some from the general fund, sales tax, and then more from our water revenues. So we had discussed this during a bunch of time, that we would still be doing the levy, but we would be abating the taxes so that they wouldn't have to go onto our property tax. Is Peggy here? I feel like if there's people that are going through this abatement process for the first time, they should hear it from somebody who's more articulate about this.
Good evening, yes, I am here.
Thank you, thank you.
And you explained it very well, the, when we do a general obligation bond issue, it requires an order filed with the county for an automatic levy, and that's why it has the lowest interest rate, because it has the highest guarantee of repayment, because it's an automatic tax levy, so we need to abate it each year if we choose to pay from an alternate source, which, when these bonds were issued, that was the plan.
Got it. Does anybody have any questions regarding this process?
Just for more background for newer Alderman, this is something that we've done in the past, like when we bonded out to do the fire stations, we instituted a sales tax, half cent, to pay for that. And when that rolls off and is finished paying those off, we'll also use that for infrastructure. That was the other thing that we had listed, I believe, for when we, when we did that half-cent sales tax. So that-
Right.
-we'll get directed into something else that we will use that for later on, when the bonds are paid off. That was the only comment I had.
Sure. Does anybody else have any other questions? If not, I would take all five of these together, or separately, I would make a motion that we approve, resolution 22-24-R, that is for the 2013 GO bonds.
Alan? Dan, I have a question.
One more question, Dan.
How often do bonds of-
Yeah, absolutely, sir.
Oh, sorry, how often do bonds of this nature don't get abated, and they end up on the property tax bills?
Peggy could answer that.
Yes, well, it's never happened to the city of Batavia, and it's very rare if a city has pledged an alternate source for them to actually have the automatic levy go through. But the bridge bonds that we have that will be paid in January of 2025, that levy is an automatic levy that goes through, and we do levy for the Donovan Bridge, so it just depends on what the goal of the city was when they issued the debt. But generally, you don't want to let it go if the plan was to abate it, because that's something that bond raiders would look at.
It would be devastating to us. If anyone else has any other questions, otherwise, I have a motion for 22-24.
Second.
Motion is second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. Under resolution 22-25-R, these are for the 2015 general obligation bonds. I would make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. Under resolution 22-26-R, that's for the 2017 general obligation bonds, I would make a motion as well.
Second, Soffa.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Zerone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. I make a motion for Resolution 22-27-R for the 2019 general obligation bonds.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Was that second, Ewer?
Solfah.
Solfah, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Chantzer?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Zerone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. And finally, 22-28-R for the 2022 general obligation bonds for a water main replacement. I would make a motion.
I'll keep it consistent. Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantzer?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Zerone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Alright, Alderman Chanset, you can keep going with the easy button.
Excellent, thank you very much. This is for Resolution 22-22-R authorization to execute a memorandum of understanding regarding the Kane County bike sharing services. We've been in this program for a couple of years now. You can see from the memo, there's a nice rundown of all the rides and costs, how much funds were generated from this. It is opinion of staff, and we had discussed this meeting before, to at least try to continue the program and watch as the momentum picks up. I certainly support the program. I recognize that it was unveiled in an awkward time, but I certainly support the spirit of this. Is there anything that I am leaving out? Laura?
Number 16. We need to back up one, Dan. You jumped ahead one. It's not that easy.
See, I can't, I can't see you're waving arms.
I'm not waving my arms. I barely moved. I'm just smiling under my mask. It's okay. Go back to-
Oh, raffle? I don't support raffles.
Come on, this is supposed to be easy, Dan.
Very good. So we have an ordinance regarding raffles. We don't see the need to administer our own program. We don't have the resources to do it. So we are looking to employ the county's resources for raffles. Am I leaving anything out?
Alderman Chanset, I appreciate you bringing that up. You are not leaving anything out, but I do want to clarify that this is a non-generating revenue source, and considering the fact that the city of Batavia currently has only a part-time clerk, we do not want to overwhelm that particular position with raffle permitting. So we do feel it is best to leave this up to Kane County so that they can better handle this, as this is something that they've done and continue to do. Thank you very much.
Indeed, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions regarding our raffles?
I'm just going to say I'm all for consolidation, so this is one of those perfect examples of, you know, best use of our time is spent with our clerk doing what she needs to do during the time that she's working, and this is best served by the county doing something they do anyway. So I don't think we need to have two permits for the same raffle.
Well, if there's no additional discussion, then I would move that we send Resolution 22-20-R, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with Kane County for the administration of raffle permits.
Second, Beck.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantzer?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Zerone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Thank you. And now for the bikes.
Fantastic. Alright, so Resolution 22-22-R, this is regarding the memo of understanding. Just to recap, we are, we've been in this program for a couple of years, looking to continue that. I'm curious, does staff have any, any other anecdotal stuff regarding bike usage that they would, they would want to throw in? I'm not, I'm not aware of anyone who's used them. I'd be interested to hear if, if we know of people who are using the program and think it's cool and want us to keep going.
Well, I can say that the bike rack, where the bikes are, is directly outside my office window, and there's a lot of activity around it. And so I do see people, you know, I don't stand there and stare to see if they actually do rent the bike, but it certainly generates a lot of curiosity, and based upon the difference in the number of rides between last year and this year, it does seem to be something that is rather catching on.
Alderman Chanset, I would also have to concur with Laura regarding these bike rentals. When walking in a community, one of the most popular nodes that we have is right here by City Hall. You see people with questions. They'll approach me and ask questions like, "Oh, can we rent these bikes out? Can we use these?" And on top of that, you have a lot of families that tend to want to use these bikes and want to learn a little bit more about them. So I would say this program has been quite popular with the community, families, and just pretty much getting around town with these, these paddle bikes. So that's basically what we want to do, is go ahead and get a MOU signed so that we can move forward a process here.
Great, thank you. And I did note on the memo that we certainly open it up to other companies in the future as well. So if there are other actors in the, in the field that can do it better, we would certainly be open to that. I would move that we send Resolution 22-22-R to council then, to pursue this memorandum of understanding.
We do have a couple of questions in the room here, Dan.
Thank you.
Abby?
Where do we stand, or was it Main Street working on sponsorship program for these as well, since that was an opportunity we had? Yeah, actually, no one is working on the sponsorship program at this point, but I did bring, when this was brought back to us, I checked in with the Bicycle Commission, and they, the Bicycle Commission has said that they would entertain looking into being able to pursue the sponsorship. So they've, they've taken up that torch, thankfully. Okay, awesome. And then also just a question about the e-bikes, then? Yes, I have reached out to Colony to ask them if we could get the original seven e-bikes that we had originally contracted for, and I have not yet heard back from them.
We did get your email about the fact that they are legal.
Yes.
That's good.
I was just going to say that my family and I have used the bikes multiple times over the last few years, and we have really enjoyed them, and it has made it easy just to do a little outing without needing to navigate major roads and things like that. So it's been good. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, just since we're talking about it, have we thought about, or we talked to Park District about, the one that's over by the Deepham seems off the beaten path, and I know in the summer when I walk down here, that's like always full of bikes. So I just think that if it were out more towards the corner, it would be more obvious to people that we're on Houston. It's almost like it's hidden where it's at. So I would like to see if we could move that one to a better location.
Okay.
Do you think the questions are asked down here, Dan?
Very good. I have a motion on the floor then.
Second, Beck.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Chantzer?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Zerone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Ann Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Chanset, do you want any of those on the regular agenda, or can those all go on your stacked consent agenda?
I feel like they could go on, on consent. That said, there's a part of me that says we should promote the bike program, so I'd be okay with presenting that separately.
Okay, well, we have that as just the one thing that will go on the regular agenda will be the bike program. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, up next is item 18, Resolution 22-29R, authorizing execution of task order number 28 with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated for construction engineering of the lead service line replacement project for a fixed fee of $401,904. Alderman Zerone?
Yes, thank you, Alan. Gary has run up here and gotten in position, so I'll turn it over to you. Thank you. Jeremy Barki, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, has put together an excellent summary memo. Just to refresh your memory, the EPA has announced a grant program for replacement of lead water services. For more than the past year, Jeremy and his guys have been working to identify lead services in town. And then he listed in here how many services have been identified, both for full replacement and partial replacement. The only funds, well, we've expended funds in two categories so far. Early on, when we found out that we were going to be eligible for up to roughly around $4 million in grant funds, which would be 100% principal forgiveness, council did authorize a task order with Engineering Enterprises for the design services, so the front-end design services. That money obviously has been spent. Engineering Enterprises has been working on this project. The other category of money that we've been spending is staff time. Construction and the task order before you tonight, we will not go forward with those items unless we actually get the final approval of the grant from the state, and that's been a commitment that we've made to council from the beginning. We have no reason to believe that those grant funds aren't forthcoming. Every indication that we've had, we've gotten approvals for every document that we've sent in. The only thing we don't have so far is the signature on the line with the final funding commitment. In order to get the final funding commitment, we need to go through the step that we're doing tonight, and that is to get a construction engineer in place. So that's why we're recommending the approval of this task order. Again, if the project doesn't go forward, there won't be a construction engineering services, but we cart before the horse here, we need to have this agreement in place before we can get the approval of the grant fund. So we're recommending approval of task order 28. Awesome, thanks. Do you see a timeline of when you'd get the, that approval? It's expected in the coming months here. We want to be out to construction this, this year on this project. Awesome. And then, do we get, would we be reimbursed for staff time as well? Well, we're reimbursed for all the consultant time. That's a good question. I can research as to how to document the staff time with the EPA. There's a lot of room there. Yeah, that's a good question. Yeah. Okay, anybody else have any? Mark?
So Gary, this is complete. Is this like, do we feel we're, we're done? Or do we think there's still a percentage out there that we're just unaware of?
Well, there may always be some out there that we're not aware of. We have targeted all of the most likely areas. We've sent surveys. Those, some of you have maybe even received the little postcards. We've tried, we've done our website, we've tried the best we can to reach out to all of those areas in town that are most likely to have lead services. I won't say that somebody, you know, didn't hire their brother-in-law and put one in that we wouldn't know about, but, but, you know, those, those probably will stop, pop up, still pop up once in a while, but to answer your question, I'm pretty confident that we're going to knock out a-
We're in good shape after this, so. And that's fantastic work. I mean, I know it's a lot of effort to put into that, but it's an important issue.
Jeremy deserves loads of credit.
Yeah. We don't want to be another town on the news, so thanks for doing everything to keep us up.
No, so far, we have been the town in the news for this particular project. So the Daily Herald has a story about it.
Yeah. This is good publicity to have about that problem, is that we are attacking it and that we have funding available for it. So I think it is good in that respect to be in the news about it.
And Gary, what year did houses could not be built with them anymore? It's 71 or- It was in the, I want to, 87 is sticking in my mind for lead-based solder, but they stopped using lead-based services, I think, back in the 60s and 70s.
Yeah, 71.
Lead-based solder, though, remained in place. Unfortunately, we probably have a lot of houses with copper water services and copper plumbing from the 1980s, which still has lead-based solder. In short of tearing out the interior plumbing in all those homes, you're not going to get at that, so. So that wouldn't qualify here? That doesn't qualify. This is for water services.
And the, the amount of lead-based solder at each joint is really small compared to 10 or 20 feet of a lead-based service coming into a house that's in constant contact with the water.
Yes, exactly. Any other comments or questions? With that, I will make a motion to send the council approval of Resolution 22-029-R, authorizing execution of task, task order number 28.
Second, Ewer.
Roll call, please.
Zerone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantzer?
Aye.
Solfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Darren?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
And Ewer?
Aye.
Motion carried, 14 to 0.
Alright, thank you. And I think we should leave that on the regular agenda so that we can talk about that one and thank our Water Superintendent for getting all of this lined up and making this happen, and so that the residents know that we're going after this. Okay, up next would be item 19, a discussion on self-generation interconnection policy and agreement documents. Another in the series.
Another in the series.
You don't get to leave the podium, Gary.
Alderman Vogelsinger has her hand up.
Sarah?
Alan, I'm going to step out for these.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask about, can I ask about that? What would happen if multiple of us had solar and then we didn't have a quorum anymore?
Because we're, this was something that the city attorney reviewed for Alderman Vogelsinger, and because it is something that affects a small number of residents in the city of Batavia, and ultimately, you know, what they would receive for the electric that's being pushed back out onto the grid, because it has to do with financial, that it's a, that it presents a conflict of interest to vote on those matters and to participate in the discussions.
I could see that.
And are we, we're in financial benefit from removing that metering the rest of us?
To a very minor extent compared to the owners of the solar arrays themselves. I mean, if you feel that the decision has been made in error, my suggestion would be to reach out to the city attorney, because I wouldn't be qualified to, you know, make a decision one way or the other on something that he has provided his opinion on.
I guess I could see that, because like if we decided to raise electric rates, it'd be hard for us to say, well, we're all going to get our rates raised, so it's in our own interest or not in our own interest to do that, but that affects everybody in the city. Where this decision would definitely have a different impact on a very small minority of citizens if you owned the, you know, self-generating capability.
It's more of a direct financial situation. That's the issue, as opposed to something that affects citywide.
Sides to everyone.
Okay, so I mean, it's very minor, and I mean, it can be, in my opinion, which isn't worth whatever you wanted to take it, but you can address this if the, if it becomes more than 50% majority becomes solar, I think would be the time to address it. But right now, I think, you know, I don't think this is a huge issue.
Right, and I don't, I don't think, I mean, if Sarah would have had a problem with it, she might have wanted to discuss that with us, so I don't think that that's an issue if she's okay with that. Does anybody else have any comments?
For the record, I did have an issue with it, but as we've discussed it, we'll, we'll have to probably discuss it later on as solar generation picks up.
Okay. Okay. Then let's start.
Under the SEJA legislation, the city is required to establish two separate policies. One is the one we've been talking about, that's for self-generation. The other one is an interconnection policy, and the interconnection policy really refers to that connection of customer-owned facilities to the city's distribution grid. So attached here tonight is a policy document, really just a one-page-top policy document. That's the official policy that will satisfy the SEJA legislation. And then kind of a sister document or supporting document to that is a, is a facilities interconnection agreement. So this is an agreement that will be executed between the city and a renewable generation customer. So I will go through really the policy document, which is, which is what council will need to adopt officially for SEJA, and will also have it take a separate action to do the agreement at next, next week's meeting where the resolutions will come forward. So, the policy, basically, section one says that Batavia shall make available interconnection services to any customer who desires to connect to our, our, our system. And I just described what those services are. So if you skip to section three, that outlines the various guidelines, the requirements that, that exist, compliance with codes, customers must meet applicable standards, the city is allowed to or may require periodic testing, and then the fees, the reasonable fees associated with implementation and application of the policy. And then finally, section four says the terms and conditions for any interconnections are as set forth in the interconnection agreement, which is the next document that we'll, we'll go over. But I'm going to just pause, because I very quickly went through the policy document, see if anyone has any questions on the actual policy document.
Keenan?
Is this kind of the same policy that people who have solar now are like, I guess, quasi-under?
Yeah, they're basically under this now.
Okay.
Yeah, because they had to meet, our, our current code already calls for them to have to meet certain guidelines, certain national standards, certain building codes. They're, that's all under our current code that they had to meet when they installed their service, their system.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure this is not going to be like a huge change to...
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
And that was one question I had, is when we adopt this, do we have to go back in and remove the other from our current code?
Well, we will have to do ordinance revisions, yes. Definitely, we'll have to do ordinance revisions. The ordinance revisions can follow after passage of the, of the date.
I know this is date-sensitive and this has to get done, but I'm thinking, you know, stuff we already have on the books to allow people that already have solar, what they went through to get to that point and the regulations they had to meet, will we have to go back and just wipe those out and replace them with the...
We basically have to go back and change the ordinance to be reflective of the new policies.
Okay.
Yep. And that can happen after that March deadline.
Okay.
Yeah. That's, that'll be continuing. You guys will get to continue talking about this topic for the next several weeks.
Yeah.
Regenerate, regenerate, regenerate.
Continue to generate.
I've been waiting to use that.
I'm going to jump to the interconnection agreement itself, and this is a lot of nuts and bolts engineering. This, this is, this is kind of the technical aspects of what happens when a customer wishes to connect to our system. They have to, again, the, the agreement will cover all the terms and conditions under which a governor, a customer will connect. And again, it speaks in here, interconnection to the electric system shall be granted only to new or existing customers in good standing. The third item, one point three, deals with processing fees, and I mentioned in the policy document, there may be a processing fee. That is something that staff needs to finalize and get back to you next week when we bring it formally. Processing fee for small-size systems in ComEd is currently two hundred dollars. That being said, the fee is supposed to meet, is supposed to be transparent and cover our costs, and I am not sure that I could justify a two-hundred-dollar fee in the city of Batavia. So we're, we're not coming in with two hundred dollars for a small-size residential system. We don't spend that much, much time on it. That also being said, for a larger system, we're going to have to spend considerably more time. So there, there's going to be, the fees will have to be reflective of the amount of time that, that, that is taken by staff. So I'll come back with those next week. I wanted to highlight those to make sure that you're aware that there are blanks in this document.
Gary, while we're on that of the fees, do we have all the equipment that the utility needs to be able to test for all the things that were listed in here? Or do we have to contract with somebody to come and test the system to see that it meets all the parameters we're talking about for...
The testing requirements fall to the customer.
Okay, so the...
The customer has to, has to do that. Now, again, you, you, there's, there is a big difference between a small twenty KW or less size system and a one-megawatt system.
Okay.
And so the twenty KW or less size system is almost more like a, well, it is more like a building inspection, where you're checking the cutout to make sure the cutout works, you throw power to the inverter, make sure the inverter stops. So that, that one's very, I'll say relatively easy. At a larger system like we're doing now, where it's three-phase on three separate services, we're checking if phase drops, we're checking total power loss, we're checking ramp rates. I mean, there's, there's a lot more to a larger system that is not even applicable at all to the small systems.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that when we go through and figure those fees out, that if there is more equipment we need, if there's contracts we have to have to be able to do any of the testing, or to know that what's coming back into the, the utility system is okay, that that's part of what those fees would be.
Yeah, and those fees, like in a large system, those, that, those costs would be borne by the customer. They have to prove that their system is satisfactory before we allow them to connect.
Okay.
Yeah, so Gary, along those same lines, is it, is just having those two rates? Does that make sense? Because are you going to have something that, like, some small business is going to have fifty K, and somebody's going to have a hundred, and somebody's going to have a million? And those would be significantly different costs, I would imagine, that it seems like two is not a good number to...
No, you're, you're exactly right, and what's been, I wrote this up, again, as a placeholder for discussion tonight. I believe we can have one rate for very small systems. I think one rate is adequate to cover all the small systems. When you get into larger-sized systems, I'm going to put, instead of a dollar value in here, I need to put verbiage in here about covering the city's costs in open and transparent and open book in order to get at what you're saying, because some systems may require us, you know, to spend one hour, some systems may require us to spend a week. I just don't know yet either, nor do you, nor does anyone. So we, I mean, that's how the verbiage will read for the larger systems.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
And just totally on a side, but we do other arrangements with customers who are looking to do electrical work on an open-book, transparent process. So that precedent is out there, and we're happy to share our costs with, with customers. So having that language next week in this agreement would be something that we already do anyway.
I was going to say, I know we do that every time we do upgrades to somebody's electrical service, to an industrial building.
Don't have any problem documenting?
They get to see what it is, and then they have to pay that.
Exactly. I don't have any problem documenting like our engineers' time. So that'll be for the larger systems. Metering, although some municipals are going with charging customers for meters, the city decided early on that we do all the metering, and that it's installed at the city's expense. So that may be a little different than some other municipalities. We've always done the metering, though, ourselves. Then you get into technical requirements, and I'm, I, it's beyond me, the IEEE standards, the NEC codes, city of Batavia codes. Later on, we actually get into the specific code numbers, again, a little bit beyond my level of technical knowledge. If we want to dive into those, I certainly can have one of our engineers here. But they do talk about things, and this, this gets into a large system, or ultimately a series of small systems, getting into problems that are caused back to our distribution, because again, like I said last week, we have a hundred years of infrastructure in this nation that's made from serving, made to push electrons from the generator to a load. And electrons go from a generator to a load, and here we are in now twenty-twenty-one, where we now have different generators and distributed generation, and now electrons are flowing in the other direction, or potentially flowing in the other direction. And our nation's infrastructure just wasn't set up for that. So things like fault current, frequency, our protective devices, those are all things that we have to make sure, again, for our very large customer, a good example, if suddenly they're pushing a megawatt of solar in a different direction, our, our recos, our relays are going to, are going to sense that as a problem, which we don't want them to sense that as a problem. So, again, that's a very simplification of a very complex issue. But for the larger systems, we need to look at those things, the engineers will. And so that's really all what's wrapped into section number two there. Inspection, testing, authorization. Again, the customer shall, at its, its, upon completion of construction, the customer shall, at its sole expense, test and inspect its renewable generating facility. And we are making our large customer right now go through this process in order to, as I explained earlier, in order to verify that their, their facility is isolated from our system in that case.
Gary, quick question on that.
Yeah.
The, so like, in two-seven-A, City of Batavia Municipal Code, are we putting stuff in, so this is more of a historical question I hear, sometimes it's hard to work with Batavia because of our code. Do we have code that is unnecessary, that is above what would be considered standard? And why would we have extra burden if it's, if there's a standard? Like, IEEE is one thing, but are we going beyond that, saying, oh, but this is better to do it this way, and why?
So, we use a national building, we use national building codes, but then we have local amendments that are added on to those national building codes. And I do know that that whole project is coming back to you at some point in time for an update.
Yeah.
I also know that specifically in regards to solar, we have done a requirement really related to first responders, and that, that is a, is a city item that we've added on top of generic response, generic requirements, that I believe also came to city council already, is that mayor, did that one come to the city council already?
Yes.
We did talk about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
I have generic, generically, City of Batavia Municipal Code to try and capture any of those local things that we have.
So those, but those are, some of those things are coming back to us for review?
From a building code standpoint, they'll be coming back to you, I would imagine, in the coming months. I don't know the exact schedule of the building code side. From an engineering, electrical engineering standpoint, that stuff's already in our code and ordinance, and is really consistent with these other, other requirements which were already spent, already...
Okay, so yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not putting extra burden on needlessly, and hopefully those are some of the areas we can clean some stuff up, because that's just, like I said, that's the, the rumor, that it's difficult to work with because of our code sometimes, and I just don't know if there's ways we can clean that up, and I just wasn't sure if there was anything from an electrical component that is a source of that consternation with, with contractors.
I would say that the electric codes track pretty closely with what the national codes have established. Where I have seen the local code deviate on the building code side is usually due to health and safety aspects. So for instance, with our last iteration of the building code, and mayor, you can back me up on this, that where we had attached domiciles, we had a higher fire rating for the wall, we required masonry in between the units. And we have, in the last two years, we have seen a fire in a townhouse that without that masonry wall separating it would have led to additional units being damaged or potentially destroyed because we had that higher fire code. But it does put an additional burden on those who want to build that type of housing. But we will, when we bring the code back, call out those things so that city council can, you know, consciously consider whether those things are, continue to be necessary, or, in this case, I think that the newest code adopted what we had put in there.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, also, Laura, the, the National Electric Code is what we adopt as part of the codes, and I wouldn't see us having substantive deviations or local amendments for that. So, I mean, that's, that's going to be pretty standard across the board. Other building codes obviously have different, you know, requirements. We just changed the requirements of how the solar is connected, because there was some concern about public safety for our first responders for that. So that was a recent amendment we did do, but for the most part, those types of codes really follow the national standards.
Thank you.
Section number four gets into things like termination, term of the agreement, disconnection procedures. Article five gets into and touches on distribution system upgrades. Again, very broadly and generically, I spoke about the fact that there may come a time or may come a particular system that does or have the potential to cause problems to our distribution system, and therefore would require distribution system upgrades. And it says that the customer who precipitates the need for that would have to bear the cost of those upgrades and not other customers in the system.
Gary?
Yes.
Are we more so talking about like, systems on top of like, large factory buildings, or like a large residential house?
So, most likely, it's larger systems that will require distribution system upgrades. That being said, if you suddenly have thirty houses on one block who all have solar, that may lead to a localized issue that we need to address.
Gotcha.
So I, it, it, if everyone gets ambitious on one block, we could run into that problem. But for the most part, distribution system upgrades are going to be for those people who want to come in with a two-megawatt system.
Gotcha.
And then they're going to have to do distribution system upgrades to accommodate that.
Are, are we as a city going to, like Mark said last week, put, start putting money away to do a wider upgrade to our system, just like we would do for like, the sewer separation, or upgrading anything else in the, this is going to end up being a, a city system. Is there something we can do proactively to help offset that, that, that kind of cost?
Yeah, it's, that's a difficult question, because we don't know which company XYZ is going to install the solar.
Gotcha.
So we don't know where it's going to fall on the system until the company comes in one day and says, I want to install solar. It's, it's a little bit of, of, I, it's tough for the city to, to, to proactively do something that may not be needed.
Okay.
Heavy?
Yeah, I've got questions along the same line, that, that language in both the documents has kind of made me uneasy, because the, if we're going to upgrade our system eventually anyway, why is the burden of upgrades being borne by early adopters? And, and if it doesn't really apply to housing, or if we can somehow separate it from housing, because say, thirty people on my block get solar, and then I'm number thirty-one, and I'm the one that like, breaks the camel's back, and then is the entire system upgrade going to fall to me?
I, right now, that's how this would be written, would be that, yeah, for a customer, and, and, and that may be having to switch out a transformer, for example, in a residential subdivision.
How much does that cost?
That's probably the nature of, of something like, would be the nature of what would happen in a residential side, because residential distribution system's fairly basic.
And how much would that cost me?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But is that fair to me as the person that just came in at number thirty-one?
This gets to the larger picture of, and back to Alderman Miller's question, you know, I don't know that I would, I would go so far as to say the city is going to upgrade its, its grid to accommodate solar, because that, that could mean literally millions and millions of dollars to accommodate solar. And I don't know that we have plans to do that. I think as the nation transitions to renewable and distributed generation and variable resources, we're going to, it's going to be a piecemeal approach. There's just no one who has the dollars to go in and wholesale design for something that we don't even know what to design for, because we don't know where the solar is going to go. And at some point in time, we're going to run into those situations where we have thirty on a block, and now the thirty-first person wants to come in, and now we're finding ourselves in need for a, a system upgrade in order to accommodate that additional person, and, you know, somebody has to pay for it. And that, that's a good question, and it comes down to policy question, is, does the city want to pay for those things, or do we put that on the customers who, who drive it? It's much less likely in the context of what you're talking about, it's much more likely in the context of a single large customer requiring distribution system improvement. I don't know that the city should want to volunteer to pay for a single large customer to come in who is going to be putting solar on their facility, reducing their cost, reducing the energy that they use, which pushes all those costs onto other, other ratepayers, and then the city on top of that would say, oh yeah, and by the way, we'll even pay for the distribution system upgrades for you so that you can do that. Again, going to charge all the other ratepayers for it. So, in that context of a large customer, it, it just makes the most sense in my mind to make that customer pay for it if they're causing the impact.
Is that consistent with what other cities are doing for their large customers?
Yeah, this is, this language is very consistent, even what you see with ComEd. I mean, this is, this is what's being done. The customer drives a distribution system upgrade that the customer has to pay for.
Could it be separated for residential?
That's what I was going to ask, but should we separate that then from the residential or whatever our breakpoint is, that's the small user versus a large, or small generator versus a large generator? You know, so that way we can kind of keep track of that. Or do we also want to add into there that if it's true where you end up with thirty people on a block and you have to do that, do those thirty people then split the cost of that? Because their system, which applies power to their block, has to be upgraded.
I'll keep it generic, but I will make that distinction. I think it's a good question to raise. Again, I think vast majority of time, ninety-nine percent of the time, this is going to be driven by a single large customer as opposed to a group of smaller people. Ten years from now, my answer might be different. There might be a lot of groups of smaller people out there, but we're getting there.
And this is really something that the state is forcing us to do to get to this point, and we may have to reevaluate this, whether it be three years, five years, every ten years.
These can always be updated. We just need to assign, we just need to adopt an initial policy.
Right, and, and what I'm saying is, I think that that's something we're going to see here, as future city councils are going to have to go back and ask these questions again, time after time after time, as this changes, because I think we're, we're all, I think, in somewhat agreement that it is going to change, that there is going to be that progression, and whether it happens, you know... and whether it happens, you know, quickly or whether it takes twenty years to happen, it's going to happen. And then it's, you know, how do we handle that? How do we bill for that? How do we, you know, spread those costs out and make it fair to everybody that's on the system that can or can't be part of that?
And then at the really large level, it's all going to fall to every single person in the country because we all will have to eventually upgrade the country's infrastructure. So it's, it's, it's a good, good question and at the local level though, we s- I think we could certainly handle it with language to exclude out certain parties right now, um, focusing on other parties and then if we need to address that, we can.
Mark?
Yeah, it was just long as I, I would think it'd be near impossible to say, oh, thirty-first person is, you know, causing an upgrade. We're going to go tell the other thirty people they have to pay now. I think that'd be near impossible to pull off. I would think that we would have to have a, a fee. Again, hey, you're, you're impacting this. It's no different, in my mind, it's no different than gas tax or a, um, because it's, it's a use tax. So hey, you're, you are, regardless of whether it's now or later, you're part of the need to, um, to upgrade these facilities. And I would think, I don't know what we're planning when we're, um, out at, um, the new development that's probably going to go behind.
Yeah, Polte's new development?
Yeah.
Was named, escaped the name of the development?
When we're putting in transformers there, are we preparing for this? Because frankly, the neighborhoods in Batavia that are going to have the greatest impact are all the new neighborhoods because they don't have big trees. And they're the most likely people to be putting up solar because they're going to have the best opportunity right now. Whereas everything down here, nobody can do anything unless you're lucky and you just happen to have a good, good facing and no, no tall trees. Are we preparing for that development to be ready for solar? Or are we going to put in normal transformers and then all of a sudden, five years down the road, we're like, oh, that was a mistake? Because everybody that just built decided to put solar on at the same time.
That's a good question. It's a valid question. Um, and I, I can get you an answer on, on that as to what changes we would do, assuming a large penetration of solar within that one subdivision. Cause that infrastructure out there is not even in the ground.
Exactly. So let's not, let's not make a mistake.
And that was another thought I had along those lines is, you know, if we take every house out there and say fifty percent of them all end up with electric car service in it, that could be an extra fifty amps that every house draws. You know, and does, how much difference does that make to the system if you increase the load that much? And if it's solar and the same thing, it's bidirectional then, you know, between all those out there. And then that gets even, you know, more use that we have to think about.
Well, then ironically, if they're solar and they have a electric car, they're probably not going to be pushing back.
Right, right. They won't be pushing it back out and, you know, and that's probably a good thing.
Except, except they will when they improve the, um, battery storage. An article I read today is about how the EV charger themselves will push back out onto the grid in the fir- in the future. And there are actually car companies that are building them that way. So it, it's very complex. There are a lot of moving parts that make it with developing technology, um, difficult to predict what that future will look like. But we're happy to be part of organizations like IMUA that really kind of forgive the analogy. They have their finger on the pulse of these things to, um, make sure that they provide us with the, the, that's where these policies have come from, is the standard language that IMUA is pushing out to its membership to say, these are, uh, meeting the requirements that SEJA has for us right now. Not that we can't, you know, change it or accommodate it.
Yeah, we've made them Batavia specific, but we've used their framework.
By the time we get all this figured out, some, you know, grade school kid today is going to devise a fission device that'll sit in one corner of your garage and power the whole house anyway.
I hope it's fusion and not fission, because fission would be a problem.
Fusion, I'm sorry. Said the wrong thing. Yeah, that, that'd be a mess.
That'd be a mess.
Thanks for correcting me, Mark. You know what I meant.
I know.
Limits of liability indemnification, force majeure, um, and then finally documents and notices. And I, I didn't want to spend a lot of time in those last two sections, uh, legalese and then, um, as-built drawings. So, um, I can count on one hand, fortunately or unfortunately, the large tracts of land that we still have remaining for development. Um, you know, Musar, the Polte Development, the Thompson Farm, the Siemens property. And there's really only a small handful of parcels left for, for large scale development.
Uh, Gary, I was going to talk to you guys about, since we're talking about like new developments, like with the school district, at least building two new schools and probably two more after that and redevelopment of like Rotolo and the high school. There's some discussion about like solar on top of those at some point, um, just so you guys are aware.
They are permitted under SEJA. There's a whole provision on solar for schools on SEJA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so, I just want to make sure we, we're not, we're aware to make those changes as this, as they, if they do and, and so that we are ready to make those changes when the time comes.
Now, being another governmental entity, would they be in the same net billing category if they have a big enough rooftop? That they don't use all the electricity they can create?
Last September, I would have had the answer for you at my fingertips, but I have not read this, the school provision since last September. So I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I know that that was kind of a moving target when that started, because that was one of the things that, uh, the solar world really thought was a great benefit because you've got how many rooftops and schools and that could all be generators.
I, I tuned out of the school discussion to focus on more specific things. So I, I just, I can find that answer out, but I have to read the legislation. I don't know it off the top of my head.
They would, I mean, they would be generators without being big users, because when they're generating the most power, school's not in session and the building would be empty. So they would be using a lot of power either.
Right.
So are there any other questions on the policy or agreement documents? I will bring back revisions to those in red line, just like I've done with the other one tonight, uh, so that everyone can see them. We'll also have a formal resolution to adopt, um, the policy document, so.
Does anybody online have any questions for Gary, for he wrap this, this one up?
No questions online at this time, Alderman Wolf.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Any comments? Okay. All right, we will move on then to number twenty, which is the discussion on the renewable self-generation policy and regulations.
Thank you. As a follow-up to our last several weeks discussions, um, I did, as I just indicated, uh, bring back a red line version of the updated policy for our council's consideration. Um, very quickly walking through the red line changes. Um, section four is just a sentence that, um, further defines the small commercials shall refer to any customer in the lowest tier commercial rate class. And a reminder to city council that at a future date, we will be coming back to you with ordinance revisions to define that small commercial rate class. So that's, that's coming. Um, right now Peggy is fully, uh, in-depth with the auditors and has other,
priorities.
Current deadlines that she's, she needs to meet before we jump into that rate, uh, class revision. On page two and page three, uh, just to technically clarify, twenty KW, um, AC or alternating current. On page four, uh, following up on the committee's discussion last week, I added language, uh, to the second, um, second option for net billing as to how to calculate, uh, 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 a credit. And I'll just read the whole thing now. It says, or a wholesale cred- wholesale unit rate calculated by summing the prior year average LMP, prior year average capacity, prior year average network transmission congestion, congestion losses. And then I added, all is reported at the Batavia hub within the PJM Regional Transmission Organization. A net billing transition factor shall be added to the wholesale rate as further described below. All calculations shall be updated annually by the city and applied to bills issued after August first of each year. So then I added another subsection which says, a net billing transition factor shall be added to the calculated wholesale unit rate as referenced in the prior section. The transition factor shall be as follows. And then for bills issued after August first, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, uh, transition factor of zero point, uh, four and a half cents, three cents and one and a half cents per kilowatt hour, um, added to that calculated rate above. So we're currently roughly around six cents today, so six cents down to four and a half, four and a half down to three, three down to one and a half, and then done. Uh, as I said in my other memo to city council, um, the timing of the years and the timing of the cents, uh, certainly can be changed, um, by city council, um, but this is the framework and then we can just change the numbers if you desire to do so. Page five, again, more technical, just to specify the AC. So, um, before, I'm going to stop there. I've got other things in this memo, but I'm going to stop there on the red line stuff in case anyone has any questions on the red line.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do.
Kian?
Is this the transition? Is this transitioning current users to what they are now?
So today, our bundled rate is about thirteen cents. And the calculated wholesale rate is roughly around six cents, six and a half cents. So there's a six cent difference right now. So that's why this, this is adder, adds four and a half cents the first year, then three cents, then one and a half cents in order to, to transition that six cent differential over several years down to a zero value. Which is I think what council had directed last week.
So instead of just going down to zero to go to net billing today, we would step it down. So that way over time it goes down to the net billing side from net metering.
To where, okay, yeah, instead of us jumping right there right away.
Yep.
We're stepping down.
And that's, I think, what we had discussed and kind of came to agreement on last week was rather than just change, cut it off and go to, you know, net billing immediately, that we would slowly go to that.
And if I'm a customer that puts in a system brand new and I now begin receiving bills after August first, twenty twenty-three, even though I'm a brand new customer, I'm still going to get this extra three cents. And then I'm going to get one and a half cents, then I'm going to get zero cents. So this will apply to all customers. Make it easy across the board, go through this transition process.
Now, and is there, was there any reason why we didn't just let the people who have solar now keep what they have until they sell their house or move away? Like we've done, like when we annex houses, we let them continue to burn if it's allowed in Kane County or, or vice, or whatever it is they're allowed to do now, we let them keep those.
Well, staff has recommended moving to all one consistent formula, opposed to having different customers on different systems. So that's staff's recommendation.
Okay.
I think there's enough, enough on our billing department that they don't need to add one more thing to that.
We did talk about that.
Plus, I think it's also fair. I mean, regardless of whether you put the system in five years ago or whether you're putting the system in in six months. You know, I, I think we need to treat them the same regardless of where that's at because the rules have changed, the laws have changed since this has started or this is, you know, since what's already there and what's happening now. And the SEJA Act has really kind of changed some of that. And I think this is to me the fairest way to get that to where that's going to be at a net billing standpoint, rather than just saying, sorry, this is the way it is, we're going to do it today.
No, yeah, I think the transition, like you said, we talked about it last week, um, is better than ripping the Band-Aid off now.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I don't know any other, to me, any other way that makes more sense for our whole utility. I, I know that it, you know, in the eyes of some people that have solar already, it's, it's not fair to them because they planned on, you know, being paid off out of their system in ten years or whatever number they came up with. But the reality of what the world's market is and what the state's market is and what our reality is, is a, as a utility is different.
Or maybe what the future could be?
Right. And, and that's also something that could change. You know, it, who knows, in five or ten years, we may need every one of them as a generator.
That last point, Alderman Wolf, that you touched on, um, last week at six o'clock prior to the start of this meeting, there was a, a statewide webinar on the right to self-generate. And one of the people presenting on that webinar was a solar vendor out of Springfield. And, um, she presented this concept called a gap and that gap is the amount of energy contracted for by a utility and then the amount of energy that the utility uses. And she said, there's always this gap where the, the utility is always having to buy some more energy in order to fill that gap. And therefore the solar customers could help reduce that gap, which makes sense for ninety-nine point nine percent of utilities who have that gap. Your point was, and I think it's the most valid point, we are a very unique situation with respect to our portfolio. And therefore, you know, council needs to decide on policies that reflect the fact that we are where we are.
Helen?
Nick?
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to point out, I, I'd like the, uh, the phase-out approach. I appreciate that. But I also think we need to start thinking as we create new verbiage, looking at it as temporary. Um, because things are changing so fast, we should put it down, is it like, this is a guideline, but we should revisit this every year, every six, this one specifically every year and look because the number of people getting on is going to change. Uh, you had just mentioned the article about, you know, if people are, all these new EVs are coming in, but then they're, they're adding to the, uh, grid is, uh, um, something, I mean, it's, it's going to be ever-changing and it's changing fast. So, um, as we make these, you know, we're, we're trying to think of the future, but let's be cognizant that I'm not that smart. But let's, let's review it frequently.
Yeah, and just like any city policy, you guys have full right to change the city policy. We're just under a deadline right now to try and get a policy on the books. And then six months from now, if you need to make change, um, you certainly can do that anytime you want to.
Yeah, a- and I feel like it's not too far off in the, the realm of the council that we're going to be talking about how this is going to be incorporated into building codes and into our construction requirements. You know, the, the, all those things are going to fall into there, whether it's about EVs or whether it's about solar or any other type of power generation. All those things are going to have to be included in that because, one, w- we don't want to be left behind in trying to catch up to the rest of the world if that's, you know, very desirable and needed, that generation, you know, on each house or on each new business is part of the, part of the package. So I think that's something we have to be ready for and we have to be, I think, out in front of that, not catching up to it.
Abby?
Um, something that was said a lot last time, you know, that out of fairness, we shouldn't be subsidizing other people getting solar with the net metering policy or with the billing rate set at thirteen cents. Um, and with some math provided for me, but verified by, by Gary, that based on what we've got, the average solar customer that we have exporting three hundred and seventeen kilowatt hours, it comes out to every other household in Batavia paying a dollar fifty-eight per year on their bill. Like that's the subsidy that we're all absorbing to, for our current customers. So yes, if we had, if it grew exponentially and then next year we had sixty-four, which would be fabulous, then each of us would be paying roughly three dollars a year extra for that subsidy. And I bring that up because subsidies are a very common and popular policy tool to promote behaviors that we find beneficial for society and like lead to behavior changes or outcomes that we see as beneficial. So it is just, um, I'm glad that we're doing the transitions. I think the starting rate could be higher and closer to the net metering cost of the retail cost because again, it's not that much for each of us to, to quote unquote subsidize an outcome that we are stating in the same policy, policy document that we are trying to get to, um, in the future. So it, uh, I'm glad to see the transition. I would like to see the starting rate go a little bit higher. I don't think it's too much for the city to absorb. I can take a dollar fifty-eight. I'll subsidize that. I think a lot of people out there in the community would be willing to pay a dollar fifty-eight to see cleaner energy adopted by the city.
Right. I, I guess the only thing I would say for that is, is at least the people that were here and, you know, in the past, anybody that's talked to us about solar at the council level, they're not there to make money. They're there because they want to do what they want to do for the planet, for their neighbor, for whatever reason they have. It's not about the money.
But it factors in when you're making that investment. That is also what we heard. They factor that into the cost of their panels and how long it's going to take them to pay it off. So it is an incentive. We are incentivizing it. And like all incentives, I mean, we subsidize a Parkway tree program. We subsidize the food pantry. We subsidize things. Like we, we do that. We invest in things that we want to happen for our community. So if we want this to happen. So if we want this to happen, then then we make policy to back it.
Alan? Mark?
Go ahead. I understand where you're coming from, and we'd have to write something that would, on the commercial side, protect us because that's where we're gonna get hammered. That is the more likely place that in the next few years, all those industrial buildings that have the rooftop to actually make an impact to our electric bills, that's gonna be the thing that's gonna kill us. Not thirty, sixty, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred households are not gonna make much of a difference. But that's a lot of rooftop over there. That that's my biggest concern is how that's going to affect everybody because that's gonna be much faster, you know, when Sunc- Suncast isn't online yet, right?
Suncast is online, but they're isolated to themselves, they don't push back.
Sure, but they don't buy as much.
Yeah, they're not buying them, they're not buying a megawatt, lots of power from them.
Exactly, so how long does that take before others do the same thing? And then that dollar fifty is fifteen dollars, twenty dollars.
The dollar fifty is only the residential customers, that's our thirty-two, because this policy is not for large commercial.
No, I understand that. But when the large customers are not buying as much electricity, every single one of us is going to pay more.
That goes back on it. So it's not just about what the small generators can push back into the system, it's what the large generators don't buy out of our system, buy out of our contracted load.
Every every utility customer pays the uh purchase price adjustment factor, which is reflective of the um part portion of the energy in the contract that we don't use.
Right, so and I guess that's also just a statement that I think we need to be clear about. Like, if we got rid of net metering, if we just went to, you know, pure net billing tomorrow and we're saying that that dollar fifty-eight for the residential customers is not something we're willing to absorb, given all of these other things, like, we just have to, that's that's a statement. We're taking away that subsidy because we, like, you know, that we are not going to promote solar in that way. And that's a statement, we can make that statement and that's fine if we're super concerned about all the other.
I I guess what I'm what I'm saying there is it's it's not about the dollar fifty. To me, it's not about that dollar fifty. It's about the twenty, thirty, fifty, hundred, I don't know what that number comes out to, but the because the industrial customers are paying for a lot more, they have a lot more revenue generation than all the households do, then I don't know what that means to us. And I, I mean, what happens, it, I don't even know what the probability that the whole industrial park could be self-generating. I don't know if that's even possible, I don't know if there's enough rooftop. And if there, if, even if it was half, what happens? I I need to understand the numbers on what that means because, again, it doesn't, it's not gonna, the the households are a drop in the bucket to our problem because we can't stop anybody from getting solar on in the industrial farm or in in the industrial side. And I think that's, that's where we have to consider the those fees that those customers are gonna pay. Now, that gets, you know, that's, now you're talking out of both sides of the mouth because it's like, well, they have to pay a lot more. So that disincentivizes them to do that. We're in a lot of, in in my opinion, we're in a lot of trouble if those buildings over there start throwing up a lot of solar.
And I think that's a scary scenario that is over here, but has nothing to do with the policy document we have.
But it does have to do with the policy document, if you don't write it in a way that the you.
But this doesn't apply to large industrial.
And then I'll jump in.
Okay.
Um, under the Federal Public Utility Regulatory Policy Act, or PERPA. PERPA is where the large industrials fall under. Minimum size one megawatt, up to eighty megawatts under PERPA. Under federal law, right now, today, they're allowed to self-generate. The utility is obligated under that law to pay them really the avoided cost for energy that they pushed back. In Batavia's case, we don't have that, go back to what I just said, we don't have that gap. We don't really have a true utility avoided cost like a lot of other utilities do. What we do have is the formula that I've kind of gone through several times now with the electrons and following the electron trail all the way back really to that sale in the wholesale market. That's kind of what we can hang our hat on, which is, which ultimately was what flows into the into this self-generation policy that we wrote for the CJ legislation, which applies specifically to residential and small commercial customers. But it's the same methodology that will be used to pay the avoided cost, and I'll put that in quotes because it's not really truly an avoided cost, but it's the one thing we can hang our hat on to pay the industrial customers. So that's how the two come together. So whatever we really kind of decide in the self-generation and net billing policy for residential and small commercial is really gonna be the cost formula that's used for one day if a large, large industrial customer decides to come in.
Nick?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I I would love to. I I think in our our master plan, we do say we support uh alternative energy and solar and I'd love to have the money to give subsidies. If we were to do that, I would rather it come from excess funds somewhere, a syntax, something. And apply it there. And then people have a choice whether they're using it or not. To put the burden on those with fixed incomes, those that don't have a choice whether they're gonna use heat or not, um, I don't think is the the best way. And I I say that only from years, nine years of tackling this problem we have with with Prairie State. And we've come a long way and we've busted our tails to keep the rates as low as possible. So it it's just kind of a a conflict for me to say like, oh, yeah, let's, you know, we've been doing so good on our rates, but we really haven't. I mean, we're we're high as it is. So to to put more burden on on some of my residents would be a a hard thing. I I support it, I like the idea. I'd like to see it come from somewhere where we know it's it's there and it's an extra fund or something. I I'd like your your plan as it is.
My second half of this memo talks about that, but if it'd be okay, I'd rather not get into the second half of this memo right now because I know we have some residents who want to speak really to the first half of the memo, the net, the net billing and and self-generation policy. And then I wanna circle back if council's okay with the second half, which talks about kind of what you were just saying, Alderman, that the program, a way to potentially do that.
Perfect, and I guess I'll throw two more cents in here. I really think that the the difference between net billing and net metering is not going to be a deterrent for somebody to buy solar panels to put on their house. I don't think that that's gonna be, that's gonna stop people because I think as we move further into the future, again, you add EVs into that quotient, you're not gonna be pushing electrons back out into the world. You're going to be using everything you can make in your own home. So I don't think you're gonna be, the 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 payoff numbers for that, if you drive up your amper juice in the house or your electron use in the house, is not gonna be part of that equation of how you pay those off. Your your use is what's gonna determine how much you, you know, how much you generate is gonna determine how fast your payoff is when you're not buying it off the open market, when you're not buying it from your utility.
Every electron that you generate, you essentially get full retail value for.
Right.
It's a retail electron.
Right, you're you're not buying it at retail cost. So I I think that that, to me, is gonna be the reality. I think we're gonna be at the point where your rooftop's not gonna be big enough to put enough solar cells on it to generate all you're gonna use when you look at everything that's going to be electrified. I mean, I I just think of some of the stuff I've seen already out of California where they're pushing for everything to be electrified. Anything that was combustion engine before or now is going to be outlawed, I'll say, within the next decade in California. And I don't think that they're the only ones that are gonna do that. I mean, I think that's gonna spread around the country. And I think the reality is that what we think of as an incentive today is not, the the net mil- metering or net billing is not gonna be an incentive in five years or ten years at all, as far as a payback on it. It's gonna be how much can you actually get on your roof to take care of the needs you have every day in your house? Whether that be charging a car, using any one of a number of things you use in your house today that you're not using that are electrified, that are going to be electrified. I mean, I think that's the reality of it. Anybody else? Anybody online have any comments? Because we're being awful quiet.
Brian Vogelsinger is online and would like to speak.
I'll step away for a moment.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
All right, so uh I was uh I was gonna go over some of the numbers, uh, but they were already hit on. So I will just move to a few of the things that I heard already talked about and I kind of wanted to cl- clarify some of the facts about solar generation and electrical usage. Um, Mr. Wolf just said that people with EVs are gonna use all all that they generate. Well, the facts of the matter is you don't charge your EV during the day when the panels are making power. People are at work during the day and they charge them at night. So what happens is even with EVs, and if you had two EVs, you're gonna be pushing power back to the grid during the day and you charge it at night. So I, we have this issue right now in my house. Um, I I have one EV and I still, last month, I uh pushed back three hundred and seventeen or three hundred and twenty-three uh kilowatt-hours to the uh to the grid and used six twenty-four. So I pushed more than half as much as I used in the second lowest generating month of the year with an EV in the garage. Um, so it's it's not a fact of how much you're using overall versus how much you make. It's when that power is made versus when you're using it. That's why solar, uh, well, net metering wise, it acts kind of as a as our, as a storage for for solar customers because when we push back to the grid, we're we're gonna pull that power back when the sun's not shining. So that's why net metering is at, with the current cost of solar, that's why net metering is so so effective. Um, because you're making a lot of power that you're pushing back to the grid through your house, regardless of if you're using a lot during the night, during during nighttime, charging cars. Another thing, uh, I know there was a lot of worry about uh thirty homes in a block getting solar. Most homes aren't super compatible with solar, uh, that are already pre-existing. That the the roof doesn't face the right way, uh, the best roof for solar faces the street. People don't want solar panels in the front of their house. Um, so really, the only way you're gonna see the majority of houses in the neighborhood with solar is brand-new developments that have solar roofs, when they start putting solar shingles on. And in those brand-new developments, you're gonna have all-new electrical infrastructure anyway. You're gonna have new new transformers uh that you're putting in anyway that will likely be ready to get power pushed back through them. Thirdly, we, I think we already paid fees for electrical infrastructure in our in our current bill. So when we do need to upgrade an infrastructure, I mean, I think when we need to repair infrastructure, upgrade it, I mean, that's what, I'm almost, almost half our electric bills goes to that, if I uh, if I'm not mistaken, plus another fifteen-dollar interconnection fee that we pay every month, uh, every every customer. Um, so I guess what uh overall um I wanna say is uh, I think net metering, for me, for us, it it, I really, I did the numbers, it's it's twenty dollars a month if we, a difference between where where we are right now and and going to the wholesale thing. It's not gonna make or break us. Um, it adds up over time, um, for a lot of, for, you know, customers that are looking to pay off a system, twenty dollars a month adds up. Um, but it's not, it's not some some massive boondoggle here. Uh, and it's also, as was stated, an extremely small cost to other ratepayers out there for a massive benefit of cutting multiple years possibly off the payback of a uh large investment solar uh power project. Let's see, I I I, it's just my opinion that a a cut to the current net metering kind of pulls the rug out from under current solar customers who, I mean, as was mentioned before, planned on having net metering. I mean, it's it's a policy around the country and and municipalities that have net metering that if you have net metering, you have it for the life of your system. It's not even, not even the resident, most most municipalities have it for the life of the system, even if the resident moves out until they phase it out with a percentage um insertion insertion cap. Uh, and so that's like, that's, I knew, I thought that was where we were going, considering that's what most of the rest of the country does. So it kind of feels like a bit of a rug pull to to take that away, away from from the current customers. I know, I know it's it's kind of, it's been stated that it's tough for for the billing department. I I'm, I, it seems like that's administrative issue, not a, not really a cost issue to the whole, whole city. But uh, yeah, that's that's really where 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 uh where I'm at here. I mean, I'm I'm, I want to see Batavia's uh green energy future continue to improve. This is not a huge boondoggle for us to keep net metering. Um, I'd like to see it because it would encourage more people to uh to go with the, go with solar. Uh, the number one consideration for the vast majority of solar buyers is the financial aspect of it. That most people don't do it to be green, it's a side benefit. Um, they do it because it's a smart financial decision uh over a long period of time. So that's uh, I guess that's all I gotta say. Thank you, thank you very much for all listening.
All right, thank you. You wanna come up, Bob?
Yes, uh, if I could, uh, I have a thumb drive here and Laura maybe could help me plug that in. Fantastic discussion, uh, there were many, many things that uh are really, really helpful about the discussion.
Okay, can you make sure to use the mic, Bob?
Yeah.
Gary can give you the the handheld.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay, so, uh, first of all, um, let's see, um, okay, I'm coming back for the second time. First of all, I really, really appreciate the opportunity. Everyone has been very, very gracious, Gary, Laura, everybody. I come back for, well, three, uh, basically two reasons. One, uh, Gary pointed out a very significant factor that I overlooked and I wanna set the record straight on that. Uh, the second thing is I have a very specific recommendation that I think you, hope you find interesting. I sure, I I sure agree with Brian, what he said about net metering, but I think we're gonna go to the net billing and net billing is perfectly good if if the if the uh credit is is good, is correct. Okay, um, do I, let me, let me take this off if I may. Okay, this is, let me, okay. Pardon me for, uh, oh, here it is, I'm sorry. Okay, and this would be revised. This must be it. Okay, yeah, okay, very good. So my remarks are all gonna be about a residential, uh, residential uh solar, uh, not about the big systems, uh, as Gary pointed out in the discussion. Uh, big systems have different uh issues and very significant issues. I'm gonna talk about mild penetration, mild adoption, uh, a small percentage. Right now, we're one-third of one percent in this city. And so I'm gonna just talk about residential, uh, residential solar. So let's see, um, this would be, is it control, is it control L? Or is it command, oh, no, it's this command L. Okay, there we go. That didn't work. Try that again. But doesn't seem to work. It did last time. I get it on. Okay, yeah. So, um, yeah, so talking about just residential solar and the fair value and how it would fit into uh the current direction we're going and what that is certainly uh net. fit into the current direction we're going and what that is certainly net metering. I can just, I can just do it without going full, sorry. Whatever, that should be fine. Why is it not?
I think you're going to have to scroll like it's a document instead of click like it slides.
Why is it not?
Advancing?
Advancing, yeah.
Scroll by.
See, it worked real fine last time.
It did.
I don't know. Oh, we can just scroll, I suppose.
Want me to do that for you?
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Hold on. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Okay, let's just go to Batavia Grid Offlink. So first of all, I want to be much, much more specific. I don't want to get lost in the weeds. So I'm just going to hit the high points and then I'll share the recommendation. Okay. First of all, any residential source offloads at least 90% of the grid. Now, large systems, it's a different thing. And large penetrations, when there's a lot more than just the low percentage that we have now, that changes. But for a low percentage, 5%, 10%, in that range, every single source offloads, it doesn't just not use the grid, it offloads the grid. When the solar, when the solar generate, generator generates electricity, it decreases the amount of energy that's flowing through the grid down to the, down to the end user. And that's something that tends to be overlooked. This is a very, very well-known, well-known thing in the industry. Any reliable offloading reduces peak loading. Reliable, that's an issue that Gary brought up, and I'll get into that. The point is that if it happens at the, at the peak loading, it's going to certainly do good in the sense that it will, it will offload the capacity, I'm sorry, it will offload, it'll offload the load, offload the grid at the peak, peak time, and that's when it counts. The rest of the time, it doesn't, it doesn't have any value. For instance, if just, any generation at night has no value because at night the loading is very small, and so there's no value at night. Grid cost and loading does scale. If the load on the grid is increased, you have to increase the capacity, you have to increase, that would certainly increase the cost. If you add 10% on the loading on the grid, then you're going to have to add 10% on the capacity, and that will certainly cost 10% more. And the reverse is exactly true in a slightly different way. If you unload the grid, then that defers the cost or avoids the cost of a capacity increase. In other words, if you offload some, then there's, then paying customers can fill up what's offloaded and they, at zero cost. So that cost is avoided. So in either case, there's value proportional to offloading. Solar production follows the sun modulated by random and coherent, the coherent nature of weather. This is the fact that Gary pointed out that I overlooked last time, and it's very important, very important, and it certainly changes things. Even when it's cloudy, there is still a significant amount of production. Everyone that has a solar array is very, very aware of that. Just the other day, usually it's really sunny, I'm producing about 12 kilowatts or so at this time of the year, and it was cloudy, no shadows, couldn't see the sun, and was producing 5 kilowatts. Of course, it varies. It's just one particular example, just as an example. Peak loading and solar production are correlated. Obviously, when it's very hot and there's a lot of air conditioners and we're hitting the peak, it's going to be a lot more likely the sun is shining. And so bright sunny days correlate positively and strongly with solar, with solar production, and therefore helps with the peak loading. Okay. So I've just, thank you, go ahead. So I've just mentioned a lot of basic facts. So now, what are the factors affecting solar offloading? The value of it? What is the real value? So time correlation between solar and peak is about three times better than just random. In other words, in other words, the sun shines real close to when the peak load occurs. Not exactly, but real close. It's three times better than random. Now, here's the new factor that I'm incorporating and addressing, and that is weather correlation between solar arrays makes solar less reliable. To try to illustrate that, imagine you had a few hundred, maybe, let's say 1,000, you had 1,000 generators that were randomly on or off, same amount of time, just randomly on and off. Let's say, let's say you had a kilowatt generator that was randomly on and off, and you had 1,000 of them. On average, there would be about 500 kilowatts produced. It would vary a little bit, but it'd be pretty reliable. It would be very, very unlikely that you have them all on at the same time. In fact, you can calculate it, you put it on any calculator, it usually says out of range, 2 raised to the 1,000 power is more than the grains of sand on all the planets. So that's not true if all of the generators are coherent. Suppose they all work together randomly, but together, completely synchronized, then at any one moment, the loading or the unloading would be either totally on or totally off, and it would not be a reliable unloading thing. So that's, that's a very important point. Thermal correlation between solar and load peaks makes the sun more reliable. I just, just mentioned that. The fact that, that the solar generation is just when, solar generation is just when you need it. It's correlated, highly correlated. So that gives it a better chance of helping with unloading. Okay, now let's get to brass tacks on that. Okay. Okay, so there's a paper, Carnegie Mellon paper. It's called, "Can Solar PV Reliably Reduce Loading on Distribution Networks?" Like ours, we have a distribution network. It's not the high-voltage, long-range distribution system, but it's a local distribution system like the Batavia distribution system. By the way, it works very well. Our system is very reliable. The Public Works Department, especially the Electrical Department, does a fantastic job. And I certainly am very proud to be a Batavian and benefit from the great grid that we have in the city. And it's worth a lot, too. So anyway, the paper examines 23 prototypical feeders. Six different locations around the United States used 19 years of weather and loading, loading data. They calculated the reliable fraction of solar capacity, and these are the numbers that they came up with. And I'll show you an example in the next slide. But here, using a criteria which is a little bit permissive, but it is an industry standard criteria, it's called, it's based on trans, transformal aging, based on the temperature and big formula and stuff, but it's a, it's a codified criteria. It's fairly permissive. They calculated 45%, 40, I'm sorry, 45, whatever, 45, 44, 45, 44% effectiveness in five New York locations, the average of those five New York locations. I'll tell you why New York in a moment. 36% using worst-case criteria. Now, we want to be conservative in here, in our city, and I think we just want to go by the lower figure, 36%. So in their quantitative analysis, they found that, and this includes Arizona and California, mostly it was above 40%. But New York, the closest, well, next slide, we'll go to the next slide, and I'll show you the thing. Okay, so there are different locations, California, New York, Arizona, North Carolina, and Texas. Okay. Of those, I think the closest we have, sorry, it's not, it's not a study in Batavia, the closest weather patterns would be New York. Anyway, it took the average of those, and it came out to be 36%. So I'm using this, this paper, this research to come up with a representative number of how effective it is despite the fact that it's coherent, clouds cover many parts of the city. Yeah, sure, sometimes there's shadows here and there, and sometimes it's bright in one house and dark in another. But basically, the clouds correlate, and obviously, there's a correlation. And so this is then a representative figure. Let's go to the next slide. So, okay. So this is a chart. Now, I don't want to get into the weeds, but look at the bottom. The bottom row is a nominal load. A nominal load actually peaks up about a factor of 2 from the average. The bundled price that we pay for, for the grid, 6 cents. Remember, it's 6, 6 or 7 cents for the, for the actual energy. I'm totally talking about the grid now, the grid value. When somebody, when someone offloads, that is, they switch off a load, they stop paying. And that, what they stop paying is 6 cents. So that's the reference on the bottom line. Let's go one line above, random. So random, if you had, if you just had a generator that just randomly generated throughout day, night, summer, winter, whatever, just totally randomly generated, so that its probability of being online was just totally flat in time, you, you would have an average peak would be the same as the average because it's average. The reliability would be just 1 because you just count on it, there's many, many generators, and so you would just count on it, uncorrelated. So now, it's still, it's just, it's a self-generator, so it's still off, only offloading 90%. So its relative effectiveness, its efficacy, as I've labeled it there, would be 0.9 compared to the reference. So it would have just a little bit less than half the value. Just a random generator would have half the value of a nominal, of a nominal load. Okay, let's go up to the top. On the top, the 4.2 is, is the peakiness of solar generation, just by the geometry of the sun, Earth turning the sun in the sky against a solar panel, east and west and south. I used actually my array, which I do have east and west, and I have quite a bit of south. So it's totally representative. And the reliability that I quoted last time was 0.74, did not, did not take into account the fact that the generators are correlated by, by, by the, by the weather, by the, by the clouds. And so that's unrealistically high. Offloading 90% because that's, that's what happens. And the efficacy now is, is larger than the nominal, and I claimed 8, 8.6 cents. Unrealistic, wrong. That does not take into account the correlation of solar generators due to weather. Using the transformer aging technique and using the data from the research, it comes out to be 5 cents. But we want to take a more conservative, worst-case criteria, and then it comes out to be 4.2%. 4.2 cents. I claim that's a realistic, realistic value. There's, there's always a lot of discussion in the industry about how much offloading, what the value of offloading is. But there's no question about the fact that there is value. Because when you offload something, it's not used as much. You don't have to add any equipment to accommodate the fact that a transformer is not carrying quite as much current. And in fact, of course, you, that you can have, take advantage of that. Okay, let's, let's get to the real, the real meter this year. Okay. So, so, yeah, okay, so this is, so now, accounting for the, the effect of weather, the coherent effect of weather, you can see that, that the, the value of the, of the energy, as Gary pointed out, the formula that Gary has that is proposed is excellent, it's perfect, it certainly reflects the value of the energy that comes to the Batavia hub. No, no problem with that. But we shouldn't neglect the value from offloading the Batavia grid. I'm talking about, I'm talking about the big, the big generators, I'm not talking about the 30, the 30 solar generators that somehow chop down all their trees and generate all in the same block. Okay, that's a little different. That's not going to happen right away, maybe someday. But, but a realistic, small amount of adoption. So this is, this is a reasonable value for the grid. Now, okay, this is, this is the, this is the important part. So I have a recommendation. Okay, so if this were presented correctly, of course, that, oh, thank you. I could just click and it would just appear. Don't cycle adoption with unfairly inadequate credit. Now, there was, there was comments about maybe we should, we should have some incentives, incentives above fair value. I agree, that'd be nice, I wouldn't complain, but at least, at least present a credit which is fair. Okay, next, sorry about the clumsiness of, but I certainly appreciate your helping. Okay. So recognize the solar value of the Batavia grid offloading and still keep the self-generation agnostic language in the billing policy. The billing policy, which I'm sure we're going to, is very good. It's, it's great, and it's agnostic to the particular type of generation. Sure, let's keep it that way. Okay, oh, just a simple, ah, but just a simple change to the transition factor. Okay, go ahead, next one. Okay, so transition factor can be phased out by renewable adoption instead of by year. Okay? So the, so I'll just state, this would provide realistic and fair renewable value, reflect the real loss of value as adoption increases, something that we've discussed and is well-known, and that's because the offloading, which is 90% when the penetration is low, doesn't keep, doesn't stay at 90%, but starts to degrade as more and more people, finally 30 people on one block, then, then the offloading benefit disappears. Anyway, so it could be the same as the transition factor except with a phased, phase out that reflects, so it would be a phase out that reflects reality. Provide adequate, fair, and appropriate incentive for adoption. Be very satisfactory. Next, next slide. Here, here, this is what I'm talking about. This very good thing that Gary just went over, this thing that was added, which is called the transition factor, is great, and it's just exactly the right framework to make a subtle change and make it fully fair to everyone, the city and the solar generators. So instead of phasing out over three years, instead... So, instead of phasing out over three years, instead, based on time, each year passing, instead, phase out according to the actual adoption. So in other words, up to five percent, keep the four point five cents, up to ten percent adoption, keep the three cents, and up to twenty percent, keep the one point five. Now, the percentages are not particularly, different percentages could be put in there, but something like that. So if the value of the offloading of the grid, which happens to turn out to be the same as this transition factor starts out, if that is simply phased out according to adoption, then it will meet, it will be, it will represent the real value of offloading the grid. It's a simple change, and it fits right into the proposal, except for this simple change. Okay, next slide. So just thanks, thank everyone, everyone that's made it possible for us to, potato's great, huh? People are so open, and the discussions here have been really very good, and thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
I guess it's an interesting idea. I guess one of my things is, what's our rate right now is less than one percent?
Less than half percent.
I was gonna say, it's what, a half percent or less? So I don't know how long it would take us to get to that point, and, you know, not knowing what the future brings for how soon that would come in, if we would ever get to twenty percent, and if our load grows, does it then stay at twenty percent of today's? Or is it twenty percent of whatever is built in the future? So I mean, that, to me, there's still some real variables in there, and I also think that there's also some cost to solar generation that's off, you know, offloading the grid, because that also raises the purchase power factor for everybody in the city. Not only just, you know, what the difference would be on the reimbursement for the power created into the grid, but the power that's not being used by the grid, that costs everybody. So I mean, to me, there's more than just, you know, what we've seen so far. Gary? Comment on that?
First of all, on percentage of like our load, that's something that staff has to calculate every year, that's an annual calculation.
Mm-hmm.
The load is. The customer implementation, every time a customer is added, we have to track that in order to check the total percentage versus the overall load. One thing under CIGIA was all that was going to go away, because CIGIA had kind of gotten rid of the whole notion of a percentage of penetration. In fact, the solar vendors wanted to get rid of it. This is in a completely different context, to use penetration in the context of a credit calculation as opposed to eligibility for solar systems or not. Mr. Flora knows, I don't necessarily see eye to eye with him on the value of unloading. I do understand that in the Pulte subdivision, which is a great example, we're starting from scratch, and if we assume solar on every single house, we can install, you know, a smaller transformer, or smaller wires, that is a cost savings, one time on a capital improvement, but that does nothing to my linemen, or my ongoing operations and maintenance, or all the other things that go in up to making the cost, which all still remain the same. So I do save one time, but I really don't save anything else besides that. And now, for any one of your neighborhoods, where solar gets implemented, again, as this example I made last week, on a cloudy day, or on a day that the solar panels are covered with snow, you're still expecting your transformers and your wires and your switches to provide you with power. I haven't saved anything, because the next day it's sunny, and now you're generating again. The costs just, the costs just don't disappear, because you're pushing out, and, I mean, Mr. Flora pointed out, really, the days that has the most value are those days that we have a peak, and those days are five throughout the year. The other three hundred and sixty days throughout the year, go ahead, Mr. Flora. No, you're good.
Okay. Here, why don't you use the microphone, right here. Thank you, right. Yeah, okay, so, the point is, that when the grid is offloaded, okay, no, no, let me focus. Like Gary said, it doesn't matter in the wintertime, or any time, in the spring, in the fall, it doesn't matter. What matters is what the probability is of the sun shining when the peak load occurs. That's what matters, and that's what determines the capacity that is needed on the total grid. So the essence, and what goes into calculating that, is what the shape of the solar development is, what the weather patterns are, and what the correlation is between hot summer peak days and solar generation. So, it's the, it's what, it's what the generator does, the probability of what the generator is going to do at the time of peak loading.
But would you, would you not also, your highest use in your own home be at that same point? So you wouldn't be putting those electrons back into the grid at the time that we would need them the most, because you would be using them all in your own house, running your own air conditioning?
That is a very good point.
So, so that's something that, to me, says, the value of unloading the grid does not occur at those peaks, those five days a year.
Let me address that, that is a very good point. There is a slight compromise there. Let me give you the actual figures. A hot summer day, I can generate twenty kilowatt, easy, and I'm using maybe two on the air conditioner.
Okay.
So in other words, it does, there is a slight effect, what you're saying, but it is small. I mean, my own experience is just one, my own experience, but I think it would be somewhat representative. The, when the sun is really shining, it's really going way over the first, internal use.
Okay.
Yeah, and I spoke with Mr. Flora in the past, that kind of the, on those peak days, his analysis is spot on, but those peak days only occur a few days throughout the year. That's where, again, the rest, majority of the days, I don't know that the formula holds true, based on the other reasons I just spoke of. So I don't know how we could justify a dollar value, based on a few days, to apply that dollar value to three hundred and sixty-five. We have, just, he made the exact point, and that is very true, that solar will help your capacity requirements, and we are giving a credit for that. That's part of that credit calculation, is energy capacity, transmission losses, so there is a capacity component in there, because they do give credit for that.
Abby, or Leah, go ahead.
I'm just curious, because there still are so many unknowns. Is there any harm in keeping policy as it currently stands, and reevaluating in another year? And then if we do get more solar applications coming in, I guess that's how it works, we can express that, you know, the future billing and policies will continue to fluctuate and change, so that they know that they're not going to be grandfathered into what, you know, what they're applying for. But then that would give us another year to see trends, see how this impacts, and then in another year, we might be able to push it another year. I just feel like we're moving forward with something with very little data, we're just saying, well, we think this is what's going to happen, or we think this is where we're going to be in a year or two. But why move now, when we don't need to?
So, this policy is being driven by the CIGIA legislation. The only data that we're missing right now is what the future deployment of solar is going to be, and we won't know that until it happens. We do know, and it's been talked about by several people, kind of what the cost differentiation is between what net billing would provide, and what net metering would provide, and what net billing would provide. That cost differentiation is known, and that ultimately then comes down to a policy discussion, to Alderman Beck's point, is, does council, you know, desire to have that as a subsidy, or not, basically, is what the question comes down to.
And right now, it's very low, that subsidy, and so in the next year, it's probably not going to change, fluctuate that much.
Dollars and cents wise, this isn't an issue of mathematics, this is an issue of policy and philosophy, and I pointed out the other example to Alderman Beck earlier today in my email, right in the parking lot. City council, I think fourteen of you all promote electric vehicles, you all want electric vehicles, but a majority of you also said, we're going to set the rate of that out there at a higher rate, because the city did not want to supplement or subsidize electric vehicle owners to use that charger out there. That was a policy decision you made, even though you didn't, you didn't, don't like, it's not like you don't like EVs, it's just that you didn't want to subsidize EV drivers. And this is very, it's analogous to exactly what we're talking about now, with solar on the roof. Abby?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, and as Bob was speaking, thank you so much for coming and sharing all your expertise with us, by the way, I just enjoy learning so much from you. You know, to the philosophy and to the policy point, you know, Mark, you come from a place of fear for the future of what an industrial customer coming in might do to our rates, right? I come from a very optimistic, more pro side of the spectrum, and both are super valid. And so as Bob was speaking, I was thinking about, you know, to Nick's point, like revisiting this every year. What if somebody came in, and how does that affect, you know, another Suncast pops up, how does that affect us? No Suncast popped up, and we have fourteen new solar installations, how does that affect us? How does that affect the penetration rate? You know, I had not thought of having it be a percentage of our total usage as being kind of the benchmark, but that addresses both of our concerns. And to Leah's point, then we get to be nimble, and we get to address the situation, because it also might be, and I think we should also continue to listen to our current solar customers, or new customers that come online in the next year, to know, hey, the price of these things have not come down. Inflation is affecting everything, you can't find a contractor, the costs are still really high, the cost of installing solar, this is hypothetical, hasn't come down, it's still really hard. Okay, so we leave our four and a half cent addition to the wholesale for another year, or to a certain percentage, and we adjust based on the market, and based on what it's saying, instead of locking into a three-year step down, or go to a percentage. I think that's a really great idea, and allows us to address your fears and my optimism. Book down.
Give me one point, and I think you are exactly right, that as a policy, city council could change the years and the value, the dollar value. I don't know, Laura may be able to feel differently, but I think as a policy, you could always adjust that. But, where you're going to find yourself potentially in an issue, is if we do have an industrial customer who wants to bring in a one-megawatt system, or a two-megawatt system, and we have a policy in place, and now we're all saying, uh-oh, that's going to be too much money, let's change it, that customer then will have an issue, because we can't institute discriminatory pricing, the legislation says that specifically. So if we're in a reactionary mode, a customer has come in, and now we want to change it, that's going to place the city in a bad position. That's why you need to have something on the books, expecting that unfortunate customer to come in the door, as opposed to the other way around.
Does the percentage model that Bob proposed not do that?
Well, the percentage model that he proposed, basically was keeping net metering in place up until a certain percentage, and so...
Well, he had the same, no, he had the same transition factor that you have in yours.
But that's very close to net metering, at forty-five.
No, that's what...
No, that's a first step down.
Right.
But it basically won't get rid of the forty-five cents for...
Who knows how long.
For who knows how long, thank you, yeah. So again, it goes back to, do you want to pay the extra four and a half cents? You're not really transitioning down, you're going to stick at four and a half cents for the next decade. That's your guys' choice.
And that will be a difference of a couple cents per person in Batavia, per year.
Again, that is only in the context of the thirty-two residential customers. To Alderman, your point, if you get a two-megawatt industrial customer who comes in under the PURPA Act, it's no longer a dollar fifty-seven. It's all of the two megawatts that they're not using, that everybody else has to pay for, plus the four and a half cents on all the energy that they send back. The dollar fifty is going to quickly go higher if you have the Suncasts of the world coming into our system. We all have to make up that load.
But then doesn't the percentage model then allow us to step down?
No, because it could be, it could be they're going to install a two-megawatt, or the next person installs a two-megawatt, and we still haven't hit the five percent yet. So five percent represents, and we're in eighty-five megawatt load, so somebody has to do that math off the top of their head, I mean, it represents a huge load, that has to be absorbed by everyone first, before we step down this dollar.
What if it was a one percent? Once we hit one percent, then we step down.
Again, that's up to you guys, as to how much you want to absorb. It just, in the PPAF, you're all going to be absorbing.
We're at one percent with Suncast.
I'm just throwing out numbers.
I know, but I'm just saying, we're at one percent with Suncast.
Right, don't test alone, it's REO one percent.
Yeah. We're beyond one percent. Hey, I guess, just really quickly, we're taking...
Hold on a second, Bob.
We're taking everything, I'm trying not to look at everything in the silo to say, hey, this is a dollar fifty-eight per customer. We just raised water rates. I don't know what else is coming, but we keep on talking about these things, and we just, it's nickel and diming, and the nickel and diming is driving people out, and this is, this is a dollar and a half, maybe. Next thing is, I mean, we fought for how long about the twelve dollars that we didn't want to do a couple years ago, on people's taxes? So, it's, these all start to add up, and that's why, again, I look at, you know, there's a good chunk of my ward that is low income, and I look at that, and I'm like, that's going to be tough on some of them, as it adds up, not just this thing alone, I'm trying not to silo everything, I'm trying to look at the big picture.
I mean, if we're not going to silo things, though, we can have a real long debate about what is actually coming down the pipe in terms of the effects of climate change, which is what this is all tied to, and how much that is going to cost us. And there's lots of estimates out there about what that's going to cost each and every one of us in our insurance, in our repairs, due to floods, due to other extreme weather events. I mean, there's a whole lot of costs on the other side of it that are the reason to do something like that.
And I agree, I would love to be a hundred percent solar, wind, renewable, I would, fantastic, but it's financially impossible, so...
Pay it here, or we're going to pay it here, we're just going to pick our poison.
We don't want, we don't want more than twenty percent solar in the city. Current technology is not going to, it's not going to be advantageous, because of its, because of its, the nature of the way it's delivered. The good thing, the advantage of the adoption phase out, as opposed to the yearly phase out, is that if there should be, all of a sudden, a big influx of new solar generators, new solar customers, that's going to go down real fast, and appropriately so, because the value, which Gary and I disagree about, but the value realistically falls off as that penetration, as that adoption rate increases. And on the other hand, if nobody wants, you know, very few people are taking up solar, yes, it will continue out longer, but it's actually being phased out in a realistic way, according to the way people install solar.
I still feel like the compromise we came up with last time is what we should go with. It's a timeframe that has certainty to it, whereas the percentage-wise, looking at it by percentage-wise, that could take us twenty years. And, you know, if it's very slow coming on, and it takes twenty years to get to that point, you know, that's just a cost that every one of our ratepayers has to buy. They didn't choose to do that. Somebody chooses to put solar panels on their house, that's their own choice, and that's the reality of this, is that's a choice, it's not a mandate. When we change our rates, that's a mandate we put out to the public that we changed our rates. Or when we allow whatever generation outside of what we already purchased to be part of our system, that's a mandate that we put on the rest of our citizens that have to make up that difference in the PPAF. So that's something that I feel like, what we came up with last week, is the way we should handle this. I don't think it's going to be a deterrent, I mean, every person that I've ever talked to that has put solar on their house, or has contemplated that, looked at what the payout was going to be, when they were going to be paid... when they were going to be paid off, of what their investment was going to be and when the true pure benefit came back to them. And whether that's five years, ten years, twenty years, that's a decision that that homeowner has to make. And they have to make that for themselves. This is citywide, if we make the decision of how we set this policy up, that is a mandate that we are putting on every ratepayer in this city. And to me, that's the responsibility of us as city council members to be the voice for those people that aren't making that choice, that have to live with the mandate. Mike?
Yeah, and I I agree with you, Alan, because nothing is guaranteed over twenty years. It goes with buying a house. People that bought cars two years ago experienced a hundred and five percent tax increase on gas that they weren't expecting. I just have a hard time accepting people that want solar, this is great. But having the people that can't afford it help subsidize it. And whether it's a subsidy from the city, the state or federal, it's coming out of our pocket.
Nick?
I was just saying, this is listed as discussion tonight, right? There's no decision coming out?
So the policy itself will have to come back to you next week with a formal resolution. Yes.
Okay. Do we, I mean, do we want, can we vote for one on anything? Do we want to see if there's consensus one way or another? Because this, there's obviously not, it's not going to be unanimous.
Right.
But if it's eleven for this proposal or six, we should find that out because that's going to.
That'll help me to draft the resolution.
I was going to say, that was going to be one of the things at the end of this tonight. I was going to try and wrap this up to the point where we say, you know, I don't know if we just even want to raise hands of who wants to go with what's been presented to us that we, I thought agreed on last week. You know, as a compromise to just saying, okay, we're done. We're going to go to net billing tomorrow, you know, as soon as this passes. Or are we going to step it down in the way that, you know, it sounded like to me, even the people that were coming in and talking to us were okay with that, to step that down? And again, I I don't know whether we have net metering or net billing is going to be a benefit or deterrent to somebody wanting to put solar in. They're going to look at it and they're going to figure it out either with the cost of their new house, the cost to retrofit their house. Are they going to stay there for five years or are they going to stay there for twenty-five years? You know, to me, that's the questions that I would ask myself, that I asked myself when we had to replace our roof two years ago. You know, the reality is, you think about how long you're going to be in the house? You think about when it's going to pay you back?
Right. The only thing I would add is if if that's consensus and we move in that plan that from the date of inception that we make a mark on the calendar nine months out, we we bring this back up for discussion and 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 review and see where we're at.
I would like to have it every year because I think it's something that we have to keep track of. And we have to see, does it just shut off solar coming into town? Does it have any effect on it? You know, does it track with the fact that the prices for, you know, in in installation and supply are like through the roof right now? And no pun intended. But, you know, it it really is a totally different world than when we started talking about what the CJAC was going to do or what it was going to present to us. I don't think any of us expected to be in the situation that we're in gas price wise or anything else right now.
Mr. Vogelstein has his hand up.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, um, so Mr. Wolf talked about how we're imposing a man, you're imposing a mandate with our decision if you decide to keep net metering. We've, we've already had this. This is a status quo. This is not a new, a new thing that you're applying. It's already, it's already been there for six years plus now. It's not new. And I I don't know, I don't know how that, how a decision to phase it out just now dates wise is, I don't know, I just, I just don't feel like that makes sense. I'm okay with, I'm okay with ramping it down with with adoption. I think that's the most, I think that's the most logical thing to do. But just to phase it out time wise, like you might not get ten installations in the next three years now. You know, I mean, it might be just pretty static for a while, just with supply chain issues and costs. I don't know, that's, I just don't feel like applying or acting like it's a new mandate is not, doesn't, doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense when it's already been here for for a while.
I I wasn't saying that it's a new mandate. I'm saying that anytime we raise rates or do anything that applies system wide that affects every ratepayer, that's a mandate.
Okay, what does, well, what does net metering have to do with that?
Because if we stay at net metering, it keeps that, that subsidy going out.
I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, well, everybody says a dollar fifty-eight a year. It's actually half that because if you cut, if you cut it down to just wholesale, it's actually eighty cents, eighty cents a year. I mean, it's less than a dollar per customer. It's an extremely small, extremely small cost. And I know we talk about nickel and diming, but it's, it's a cost that's already been, been there. It's not a new one. And it's, I mean, even increasing it by double is not, it's extremely small, but an extremely big, large benefit to people considering solar. That's all I'm saying.
Abby?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what you were saying because I don't think anyone on council has voiced support for keeping net metering. I think we've heard about it from customers, but nobody, nobody on council is voicing support for it. The current plan that we have in front of us is still going to reduce or it's going to reduce non-solar customers' bills because it's cutting down from retail to wholesale plus a little. So it's already to the benefit. We're already giving a a boost to the rest of us. And what I'm not super sure, I I still, I support being a little bit more responsive to adoption rates. But what I'm not clear from what Gary was just saying is that regardless whether we go by years or we go by percentages, when are we going to be able to safely make changes? You know, if we revisit this in nine months, if we revisit this in a year, when can we make changes and not open ourselves up to liability, like you were saying? Or if if what we put in place right now, whatever time schedule it is, this is it. We can't change it.
I would only be, I would only be fearful of making a change on the heels of like somebody coming in and then us saying, well, you're a big customer, so now we're going to change our rate structure. Because then that that customer may may say, well, you're being, you're being discriminatory against me because I'm now bringing a big system. So I think if you guys establish, however you want to do it, every six months, every year, that you're going to review and you may make changes and you get that as part of what you're discussing, I think that's perfectly fine. I think you're going to run into trouble, though, if you have XYZ company come in the door and then you scramble the next week to make a rate change. That's where you're going to have a problem.
And that makes sense. But also, yeah, if it's in our policy and whoever ratepayer, you know, big customer comes in and they know we're on a step down, they they will know upfront, this is the potential. Your, 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 your net billing is going to change over the next couple, you know, when, whatever the cadence is, you know, based on percentages or based on years. They'll know that, so it won't be a surprise. I don't know, I still think being responsive to the market is the better.
I I guess my, my thought with that would be there's no way a customer could know on the percentage wise when that's going to happen. A date is a certainty. Whether it's one year, two years, five years, that's something that anybody can be assured of. On a percentage basis, nobody in this room can tell me when we're going to have five percent, ten percent, twenty percent. There's nobody in here that can tell us that.
And I'd just add to that, I would rather put it in writing and then in nine months say, you know what, let's keep the rate the same for another year than the opposite. Like Gary says, you can't, oh, this is going faster, let's raise it or speed it up. It's, it's easier to go put the brakes on this and and extend it out than it would be to to speed it up, like we're doing now. You can see how hard that is.
Well, if I've got your word that we will actually do that and we will extend out the four and a half cent, you know.
What would be our criteria to do that? What would be our criteria to do that? Because, you know what, you and I might not be here next year.
Well, I mean, then why we even suggest that we're going to revisit it in nine months? Like, what does it?
Because it gives every city council at that time the decision as to whether based on the current situation and the mind of that, that city council that is sitting at that time to review that policy to determine whether it's the best thing for Batavia to continue it in the future.
Keenan?
Since we're on like a two-year election cycle and then this one's, there's still a new one starts in twenty twenty-two here, why don't we just make it every two years? This, the, it drops off. That way, every new election cycle, we have, we revisit it. Because it doesn't, Prairie State, something happened with Prairie Straight in twenty thirty, right? We have to like drop to half or whatever it is too. That would, I mean, I'm, something I'm looking at is like, that pushes the zero down to twenty thirty.
Closer to that end date.
That, yeah, there, does that, doesn't it drop to like half they have to produce?
No, that's in twenty thirty-eight.
Ah, okay.
Twenty thirty-eight and twenty forty-two.
I was way off, okay. So, but it, but so.
Twenty forty-five, sorry.
We just do every, to twenty twenty-two, twenty thirty-three, twenty twenty-four, just every two years. Each new election cycle of people can make that decision instead of, because again, half of us might not be here next year and half of us are. That's a suggestion. Where we just revisit this in a year. Every year, whatever you guys.
I like that compromise.
Go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, wouldn't the the percentage insertion really protect against a large customer coming in? Because if they would tip it over, the percentage that you say is okay, then, then that reduces the 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 credit. Like, that that protects against that and you don't have to wait until the next timeframe that that you've decided predetermined to drop it. Like, I mean, that's exactly what the percentage does. It protects against a massive boom in, a boom in solar or or a large customer coming in. Because as soon as they tip above that percentage, now you lower the credit.
Laura?
I just think to other people's point that that we have no idea how long into the future that could be. And that means that that extra amount that would be borne by the other customers could go on for many, many, many years or it could be next year. But it's just something we don't know. Whereas if you put in this schedule and you revisit it on an annual basis to determine is this city council still wanting to implement the next step of change in the coming year? You can, you can address that on an annual basis. And you could say, no, we want to keep, keep adding in the four cents for an additional year.
Last thing, promise from me. The challenge with percentages, I don't know what that means. I don't know what three, four percent means dollar wise to anybody. So until somebody can show me what that means per household per year, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. I mean, twenty percent could be fifty bucks. I have no idea what it is, so.
Well, we don't know what.
I think what they're meaning by percent is the penetration rate.
Sure, the penetration, but I don't know how that penetration rate of nineteen percent, how, what's that effect per household that doesn't have, isn't getting the benefit?
Right. And at that point at nineteen percent, our rates could be thirty percent higher than they are today. So the effect on somebody's actual bill, dollars and cents, could be totally different than the dollar fifty-seven or whatever was used earlier per per ratepayer. We don't know where our rates are going to be in three years or five years. We think we know where they're going to go, but that may not be reality.
But for the next five years, until that reality is true, a dollar fifty or eighty cents is not a lot of money, like per year.
But it changes for every company, every household, that that dollar amount goes up. That's what I'm saying is I don't know what the percentage means. If we're at four percent adoption, we're, we're a little over one percent right now with Suncast. So I think we're, we've been doing calculations based on point three, which is not true. It's one point three would be my guess. And so I.
Yeah, the the zero point three value came because somebody took the thirty-two and divided by ten thousand, which that's, that's not an accurate value. It it, it's the total connected load right now versus our peak load. That's how you determine the percentage.
Okay.
It is not the point three that keeps getting tossed around.
Can we just, maybe we just vote on what we want? Raise your hands or something?
Yeah, I think that that's probably the best thing to do so we can give staff direction because we do need to have this done early in March. It has to pass.
So what are we?
In whatever form we decide to to put out there.
We're doing it. I mean, is it, is it a two-year time schedule? Is it a one-year time schedule? Is it a percentage schedule? What are we, what are we going on?
I think what was suggested is that we were voting on if, how many are supporting Gary's versus how many are supporting the alternative that was suggested.
What if it was between a two-year and somebody like?
Well, that was a review. I I didn't, you weren't proposing to have it be on a two-year schedule that it drops down. You were talking about the review of it, correct, Keenan?
No, I was, I was talking about having the dropdown be every two years.
Instead of every year?
And, and review it. Because, because that change happens on this side every two years and on that side every two years with election. Which, again, we're going to review it every year more than likely. So we could, we could make this change in a year.
Right, I guess the first thing I want to do is the, the plan that we have in the memo and the draft in front of us shows, you know, the, the four-year step down to get from A, B, C, and D, the numbers that are listed in there at four and a half cents, three cents, one and a half cent, and then zero. That's the first proposal that's there. And I guess what I'd just ask is a quick show of hands of who would support that as written for what's there. I don't know if anybody online wants to either raise your hand or turn, turn on your screen so we can see you and raise your hand if you're in support of that. What was proposed to us in the memo?
Confirm with Tony, is he?
Tony, do you have a question or are you raising your hand?
Raising my hands.
Okay. And so I take it then the, the other aldermen that are online are not raising their hand? Okay.
Seven.
Seven. Of course we have a split.
No, we don't.
What?
No, we don't.
There's only thirteen.
Oh, we only have thirteen.
Did we lose one?
What?
Oh, we did lose one, yes.
Yeah, we did lose one. But if that's the way it's going to be, it's going to be on thirteen votes.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at. If, you know, anybody else wants to bring up any other proposal that they'd like to, we can do that if we, you know.
That was for direction. I mean, we.
Right, to to try to give Gary direction as far as what to bring back for us to vote on so that we can get something that we should be able to pass at a council meeting so that way we can get this to abide by the CJAC. Leah?
Just one quick comment, whether we do a one-year step down or a two-year step down, should some language be in there unless the twenty percent is reached? For some reason, in the next eighteen months, everybody does solar, all industrial will want some protection there. Would that be necessary?
Not a bad idea.
I I was going to say, for protection, I think that's a great idea. To add one line that describes that situation.
I'll work that in. I'm not sure how I'm going to phrase that yet, but I understand exactly what you're saying.
It's two lines, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
That would be great.
And net billing, was net billing tied to the August twenty twenty-five? Was that from the CJAC, Gary?
So there is some confusion and I figured that may come up tonight. That happened to be just by coincidence as I stepped down the rates. Twenty twenty-five is a significant date from the investor-owned utility perspective because net metering continues until twenty twenty-five for investor-owned utilities and then they, they transition to a net billing formula. As we talked about last week, the way the legislation is written, municipals and co-ops have the authority to establish credits that are different from the. that are different from the investor-owned utilities. So the two dates happen to come together, but that was, that one has nothing to do with the other.
Right, and, and that was going to be my suggestion after we got through the discussion on this, not to cloud this, but any future city council, or even the current city council, could come back and develop a, I don't want to call it a rebate, or some type of incentive that could incentivize the, the installation of solar or any other renewable energy source. Just like the federal government has done, the state governments have done in the past. We could do that as something separate from this. This is really only talking about reimbursement for energy applied back into our system. Not for wanting to have renewable energy within our system. You know, I think if, if that's truly what we want to do, and we really want to push to try to get solar or any renewables within our city, to do that and, you know, strive to be the green community that we think we want to be, then that, I think, should be a separate discussion and a separate incentive. Where if that's really what we want to do, and say, you know, we want to go to the community and ask them, hey, does everybody want to pay a dollar fifty-seven to do this? Then we figure out how to do that. And we figure out if that's what the community wants, then we do that. You know, I think that's part of the reality. I, my biggest problem with it is, is telling somebody that's living on a fixed income that you're paying for somebody else's solar panels. And regardless of the dollar amounts, that, that, just the perception of that and the actual reality of that to somebody, I have a hard time justifying that. That's my own personal feeling. Gary?
Is the second half of this memo, which I stepped away from if you recall, because I think that we wanted to focus on the net billing and sub-generation stuff. The second half of the memo really falls generically into a category of those who can afford solar and those who could not afford solar. And to your point, Alderman Wolf, does the city desire, at some point in time, to create a program to assist those that may not be able to afford solar, to be able to, to implement solar into the city? With the presumption that those who already can afford solar really don't need any more incentives, but there's going to be a whole group of people out here who can't afford solar. And if the city wants to embrace, as we say in our policy, eventually getting to renewable, then, you know, maybe there needs to be recognition that, that something needs to be done to help those who can't afford solar to implement solar. That's all goes to the spirit of CJ, and the whole second letter, which I, 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 I misnamed in one of my memos, but it's equity. So the, the name of the act got changed. It's the Clean Equity Job, or Jobs Act as opposed to Clean Energy Jobs Act, but.
Climate inequity.
Climate inequity, Jobs Act, thank you. Got changed, yeah, several times. But, but neither here nor there, the, the, the crux of it is, does the city wish to consider a program? And in my memo, I talked about doing that with electric revenues. Alderman Serone raised tonight, perhaps you guys find a different funding source to fund such a program. You know, the, the, the theory of the program is presented here. The nuts and bolts, we have not investigated, but I will say, we don't have the staff to go out and do income qualifications of residents, to go out and, you know, vet contractors for installation on residents' homes, to get the waivers, to oversee the, all, the, the whole program is going to take a bunch of administration that we don't have the staff to do. But it may be a worthwhile program to, to accomplish all the other goals that council may want to establish. And if you can find a funding source for that, that the community could say, you know, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a sin tax, and this is a great way to spend that money, or all the ratepayers should be spending that money, however you guys want to fund it. I'm just saying, tonight, I, I, I think the idea of the program is a good program, but we don't have the staff resources to carry it out, but we could, we could make it happen through a third party, and it could accomplish a lot of goals. So I just tossed that out.
Gary?
Programs exist. I've heard presentations by Illinois Solar for All, which might be a, a good one just to come in here and inform us on how that program works and what they would need from us in order to kind of participate. Some might say that burning coal is a syntax, or would qualify as a syntax, so it can go on the rest of our rates, because we are the problem. So that's my consensus there. And of course, like, lie heap and weatherization, you know, they, I mean, I think their rate, I think their income qualifications are set too low. They disqualify a lot of people. I'm hoping that changes over the next couple of years. But those programs and those energy efficiency programs and weatherization programs to make your home better, and replacing outdated fixtures that would benefit low-income, those are all provided for free through community contacts that services King County. So a lot of that already exists, helping to get the word out would also be really helpful.
Right.
Could be a great referendum question.
Yeah. Anybody else?
We'd be happy to do more research. Again, as I said in here, we haven't really dove into the topic. If it's something that council wants us to research and bring back, we certainly can. The biggest, the biggest hurdles are finding, you know, finding resources to pull it off the program and finding the financial resources to support the program. I think the goal of the program probably gets more universal acceptance, just a matter of how to do it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments or questions for Gary?
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks for another interesting discussion. Thanks for coming down, Bob. All your input again. Brian is still there, thank you for being part of the meeting tonight.
No problem. Thank you guys for listening.
Does anybody else online have any other comments?
No one online, Alderman Wolf.
What?
There's no one online.
Nobody else online, okay. All right, then I think we are done with that, and we will move on then to item 21, which is project status.
Just a couple of things, a reminder to the community that on February 23rd, Active Transportation Alliance, Ride Illinois, and City of Batavia, along with the Bicycle Commission, will be hosting community engagement meetings for our bike and pedestrian plan update. And you can sign up for virtual sessions. One of them is being held from 11 o'clock to 12:30 on the 23rd, and the other is from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. So we're hoping to get a lot of participation in those. And the survey for, about walking and biking in Illinois is still open. You can find information about that by visiting the City of Batavia's website at cityofbatavia.net. Scott Buening has been asked to be a municipal representative on an EV readiness committee with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We continue to work on an RFP for the four main properties the city owns downtown. The RFP would solicit proposals for redevelopment of these properties. And before we release these to interested developers, we'll be providing that information to city council for your feedback. And any proposals anyway, would need to have city council endorsements before they could move ahead, as the, these are all city-owned properties. Signage for the sites is being manufactured and should be installed either later this week or beginning of next week. And the Plan Commission will have their regular meeting tomorrow. They have a public hearing on the proposed Culvers Restaurant, plan development and conditional use, consideration of a wall sign deviation for the new Starbucks facility on Randall Road, and consideration of the final plan subdivision for the Windin Creek development on McKee Street west of Randall Road. And that's all that I have today.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Laura?
Yeah.
I have another.
Oh, okay. Mark?
Just a question, I don't expect to necessarily have the answer right now. We've been talking about the mobile app for residents for a long time. Is there an update on where we're at with that?
I don't know, Gary, can you give an update on viewers?
For input of service requests, that's been on our website now for a while. Residents can submit service request issues through the, through the portal.
I thought there was supposed to be a mobile app delivered, though.
I could talk to Howard about that. Civic Plus has a mobile app that's part of their platform. I don't know if that was part of our project plan.
I don't think that's part of viewers, no.
Because people can go to the website on their phone and, and make those requests without using a, a separate app to do it.
Okay. I'll have to look and see how easy it is to get to, because I don't remember any, like, thing that shows and guides people to that. Do we get a lot of requests?
Yes, we do get a handful through there, I apologize, I wasn't, I turned that back off again. And I was just trying to pull it up on my phone as to, as to where it falls on our, on our webpage, so.
I want to say it's how do I, and then it's electronic requests. But I'll, I'll check it out.
Yeah, I think it just seems way more prominent then, because I never noticed it, and I look for those kind of things. Thanks.
Okay, others? Leah, go ahead.
I had a River Street business owner reach out today asking if there was any updates on closure of River Street for the season? As they're trying to make plans for the upcoming summer.
So again, that would, I will defer to Gary about an update on the application for permit for creating the one-way.
Yeah, so the, the city's current plan is to convert it to one-way southbound. We have had plans in at IDOT since the holidays. And we just checked last week with IDOT, they're still waiting for their arterials division to provide comments. And I went through with engineering today, the, the schedule for bidding and construction, and Memorial Day is starting to loom large. If we don't get comments from IDOT soon, we're going to be sliding past the Memorial Day date for completion of construction. The intent is, based on council's direction, not to close North River Street, to leave it open, and then to only close it at the north end for special events as needed. I was not under the impression that we're closing it all summer long again.
I'm curious that perhaps the business owners might need just an update on everything, what's happening.
Yeah, and firstly, we haven't had a lot of information to report. We're still kind of in the same holding pattern.
Because I, I think they might still be unclear about what the plan is.
And what that would allow. Like, if it, if it is one-way after Memorial Day, does that allow for tables on the sides with the path? Or does it mean the street is shut down to all tables? Just some clarification, I think, would, would help.
I don't think we know that yet either, that's on our list. We've talked about that internally, to get fire out there, and police out there, and PPS out there, and engineering out there, and Main Street out there, and the Chamber out there, and the North River Street. And one day, we'll have 30 people walking up down that street to figure out that layout. We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Well, if you buy food and drinks while you're there, it'll, it'll be successful.
We need to balance the business owners' concerns versus fires' concerns for emergency access versus public works' concerns, to be able to get our back truck in and out of there. You know, so there's 10 people who all have concerns, that we just need to come up with a plan that meets.
I think the preference would be if there are businesses that are interested in having additional space to serve customers, that they would utilize the city's current policy for renting public space to put additional service areas out there. But I think when we do the conversion to one-way, that there's not going to be the large-scale outdoor public dining that the city hosted and cleaned and provided garbage service for. There just isn't that much space left for those kind of tables.
Has there been any follow-up meetings with the business owners since the One North Washington project fell through?
There's been no additional information to share with them, because we already have discussed with that whole group the conversion to the one-way prior to those meetings. So we're still in the same pattern of, we are moving forward with converting to the one-way. It appears that it's still going to be, you know, our plan is to have it in place by Memorial Day. If that should change, and we're not able to do that, then we would definitely reach out to affected parties to let them know. But there's been no information to share. And I think that sometimes is frustrating with people, where there's, I could push out and something that says it's still the same information, but it's not really, I don't think, going to help them to know that nothing has changed since the last time we shared information with them.
I think it could be helpful for them to know that you are still waiting on IDOT and for all of that, that you haven't forgotten, you know, like.
Yeah, that, that might be a good thing to do, and then maybe Gary can kind of formulate, if you think you can, a date that we, you know, a certain date that you're going to say, okay, if we don't get a, a reply back from IDOT by this date, Memorial Day weekend's not happening. So that way, that's out there, and they can, you know, know way ahead of time that if they don't hear back from the city that, hey, we got approval from IDOT, and this is going to start next month, you know, on the construction there, that they will have to figure out something different for Memorial Day than a one-way street in front of their business. That, that might be the best thing to do, is that, is to have, you know, I'm sure we have, still have the same email group that we can send that out to, and, you know, keep them apprised, and maybe say, once a month, we're going to send this back to you. You know, where we're at, what IDOT has said, you know, what the latest update is, even if it's, you know, we don't have an answer yet.
Yeah, I can, we just talked about it again with engineering, the schedule-wise. So we can send out and communicate that on IDOT's approval, it'll take X number of weeks until end of construction.
Okay.
And then we can, we can work on that.
I think that would be good, at least to have communication. I think you're right, that any communication is better than none.
Yeah, I think.
Even if, even if it's, we don't have an answer yet of when we're going to do it.
For, for their summer programming, summer is, is in the big picture, summer, they should be planning on a one-way southbound street that remains open and only closed during special events, which, you know, are following the special event permit process.
Okay. Okay.
And then on the city's website, there's, there's main buttons you can press, and there's one main button that says online services. And if you go on that online services, one of the categories is that service request portal.
I'll do you one better. I just went in and typed in service request, and it took point 11 seconds for it to come up with service portal as the first thing that came up on the search.
So it's one of the buttons on the homepage for the.
Yeah, it's one of the buttons on the homepage.
I, I love the search features. I've been trying to figure out what permits I need to get from my house and other things. I've been using that a lot.
They really need improvements on that.
So it, it usually comes up pretty quick.
I'd have to see it again, I just, I'll have to see what it, the feature there. Because I guess I just expected somebody being able to say, hey, here's a pothole, and take a picture and send it in. Something very, very easy. And that's why, when I go back to when Marty was here, we talked about this, and he showed apps from other cities that made it very, very easy to do that type of thing, but. We can talk about it later.
Nick?
I have another, but Alderman Chan's had something.
Okay, Dan, you got your hand up, go ahead.
Thanks, just real briefly, a couple of things. One, I just want to say thank you to staff for their continued commitment to the Carriage Crest project. I know we have a meeting coming up, a neighborhood meeting coming up next Tuesday, I believe it is, Tuesday morning. It is a highly emotional project. A lot of residents, as you remember from our, our meetings before, are on edge and terrified every time it rains. And so they are definitely looking forward to our continued commitment and get the project moving. One last thing too, Laura, I just, I just remembered this, because I was peeking at the site. We haven't updated our FOIA monthly reports in a little while, and I use those for public safety to determine who's stalking me. So if it's, we can get this back on the website, that would be, that would be useful.
Yeah, but what we've been able to do for the, the FOIA collection is just have a repository for the responses that we've made. But we kind of have been at a lack of resources to have somebody with the, but we'll, we'll figure out how to do that on an ongoing basis.
For sure, and it's, it's not like an urgent thing, but it occurred to me that it has been useful for historical tracking and whatnot, that's all. Thank you.
Nick?
Any update on the Park District and when they're going maskless and when we might get together with them?
No.
Along the same lines, I ran into a school board member. Is there a chance we can get?
Is there a chance we can get a meeting together with them? They've got a lot going on right now. And the other board member showed, the school board member showed interest in us getting together and really talking, seeing what they have planned with some construction, and they have a lot of long-term plans going, and he thought it would be best that-
Okay, I'll invite them in for a presentation.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Keenan?
Along the same lines, I want to update people of the community, Community Engagement Session Number Two for the Batavia Public School District is Thursday, February 24th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Batavia High School in the library. They will be talking about and discussing the financing options and tax implications for the plan. So please engage. Thank you. 6:30 to 8:30.
Gary?
City Council had requested, and we've made arrangements to have Waste Management come in next week, so he'll be here one week from tonight.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments, anybody online? Okay, the next thing we have is, I'll need a motion to go into executive session for land acquisition A and land acquisition B. Second. Motion by Soffa, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Sarum?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
And Chanzen?
Aye.
All right. I do not expect any action after that. When we come back in, we'll just come back into regular session for an adjournment. Uh, we will.